Thank you, I need you around Matt. Okay, let's please, I'll stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could I have someone please make a motion to approve the agenda? First. And second was Matt. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carried. Now what we're gonna do is we're gonna do Board of Education Spotlight Student Recognition, the UOCM BOSI's program graduates. David Kilkors is gonna take care of that along with Ms. Kim Deck.
Hello? Alright. So what we're gonna do is, we'd like to recognize the students and their achievements that have graduated from the various OCM BOSI's programs. So I'll read the names off and you can come up and Mrs. Deck will give you your certificate, okay? So hopefully I won't mess up your names, but if I do, I apologize in advance, alright? First, Quengela Anderson, oh, I'm sorry. These students have graduated from the OCM BOSI's Career and Technical Education Program. Quengela Anderson, Madison Archer, Julie Atkins, Grace Bell, Michael Bombard, Porter Bristol, Daniel Burko, Taylor Bushnell, Colleen Sissa, Courtney Klut, Declan Coe, Vincent Cosme, Devin Cowan, Ashley Appolito, Nolan Fenner, Dakota Green, Casey Hawke, Samantha Hornsby, Justin Jennings, Nathaniel Jennings, Branna Jennings, Darius Johnson, Zachary Klein, Morgan Liscum, Natalie Long, Taylor Lumble, Cindy, excuse me, Cindy McConney, Juliet Manchester, Audrey McConnell, Belle Moore, Eric Morley, Francesca Naples, Dayton O'Donnell, Devin Oger, Cameron Pear, Zachary Padapow, Alec Rowe, Jacob Russell, Lindsay Russell, Ethan Snyder, Brandon Spraker, James Strain Gaggin. James? Quinn Sweeney, Zoe Van Tassel. Vincent Cosme? I thought I saw you come in.
Hold on.
Sorry about that. Saw him come in. Congratulations. Yeah. Ryan here? Okay. The next graduate from Crossroads Program, Erica Schneider. Students who graduated from the AHSEP Program, Stephen Grammer and Anthony Ladd. Students who graduated from the OCM Stars Program, John Baker, Josephine Dixon, Spencer Goodell, Taylor Hardy and Brandon Stewart. Okay, and last but not least, from our Innovation Tech Program at OCM BOSI's Donovan Frank. Donovan here. Congratulations to all of our graduates.
A special thank you to the families of these students. Thank you so much for letting us work with your kids over the years that they're with us. And now we're gonna start into the business part of the Board of Education meeting, so if you have something else to do or you really are anxious to see how local government works, please stay. But feel free to go if you'd like. Thank you. Okay, I am the Board Clerk of the School Board, Board of Education for Bolsoil Central Schools. And this is our beginning of our reorganization meeting. And one of the things we're gonna do first is to give the oath of office to our new board members, starting with our new student board member, Jordan Grady. Jordan, could you read this?
I do solemnly swear to affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office student board member according to the best of my ability.
Next, we have our three recently elected board members. I'm gonna do this alphabetically, so I'm gonna start with Brian Dingell. If you could read this same statement off.
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Next, we have Ms. Valso.
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
I'm wearing my glasses.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Thank you all and welcome aboard as board members of the Bolsoil Central School Board of Education. Next on our agenda is the nomination and election of officers. So now I'm going to open the floor for someone to make a nomination, and I have a second for President of the Board of Education. Jim?
I'd like to nominate Joan Reeves.
Is there a second? Matt Jaeger? Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favors of Joan Reeves becoming the new President of the Board of Education?
Jamie, I'm not sure how things are usually done, but we had a roundtable last time about speaking as to why, and I'm not sure about the legalities or anything, but I think it would benefit the community and the board members to know why people would wanna be President and what their vision is, and to have someone just say, "I wanna do it and that's it and nothing else." I just think that we owe people more, people sitting here and the people out in the community.
Well, we could have asked the majority of the board to say if they wanted to have a discussion. Anybody wanna, you wanna make that a motion?
I make a motion that we do our due diligence as board members to have a discussion and understand why people would like to be in the position of President and how, what their vision is in a leadership role, so we can vote appropriately.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Alright. Who wants to go first? Pardon? Oh, all in favor, sorry. Any opposed? Okay. Jen, why don't you go first?
I can go first, but I think I said a lot last time, but Joan, do you wanna go first? I'll let you go first.
Well, I just, I think at this point in time, I do have the experience. I'd like to see more board self-assessment, more board team things. I'd like to see us working more together as a group, and some of that people doing their own individual little thing. I think a board self-assessment is one of the most important things that we really haven't done, and it's one thing I started here years and years ago, it's been modified. And we don't really take it probably like we should, because I think it makes us more effective. And I think we need to have a few more team reviews, so we can do more in-depth on curriculum and other topics. But generally, I've done this before and I've been pretty successful at it, and I'd like to see if we can get back to working as a team again.
I appreciate your experience and your time on the board, and my first two years on the board, there have been issues, and I haven't seen much change with people and the roles that they are in. I agree with absolutely everything that you've said, but one thing I do know is change is inevitable. I mean, we see change in education, we've seen change on this board, new board members each of the last three elections, but progress is optional. I mean, if we keep voting the same people in, it's very difficult to have change, and I'm incredibly energized, I'm motivated, I have the passion, I have the time to do it right. What I would like to do is see more leadership on the board side. I feel like we get a lot of our communications from the district office, a lot of direction from them. We work as a team, but our communications on the board side hasn't been of the caliber that I feel it should be and could be. You know, just the email exchanges with the board committees, that's supposed to be a role of a President. That's not the district's office role to do that, that's part of the description, if you look in our policy, and that hasn't been done by the board leadership. I'd like to take on those things. I think that we do have a lot of room for improvement, and I think as a team, we can do that, if we, as Joan said, have more team reviews. However, being in the position, it's more than just the basic things of signing and running meetings and doing agendas. There's leadership involved with that and direction, and some guidance with, some collaboration and input from everyone. I would like to be in this position, because I think that I can create something with input from everybody to have good guidance for what all the responsibilities are of a President, because I haven't really seen that yet. And this also goes to board orientation. I think that we can do a much smoother transition, I have a vision for that as well, that I would like to get some input on. And all the things that I said last time as well.
Okay, let's call the questions. The first nomination was Joan, so I'm gonna ask everybody who would like to see Joan Reeves as President to answer in the affirmative. Aye. That's four, right? One, two, three, four, five. It's Matt, Jim, Christina, Joan, Kim, correct? You raise your hand? Okay, so it's four votes, correct? Am I wrong? Okay, all those who would like to vote for Jen, raise your hand. One, two, three, four. So we have a tie vote. That means no one's President.
And we can't move on, so Robert's Rule of Orders is we have to put it up for a vote again.
Okay. Well, we're not, okay, I'll try it again.
I mean, we can have, I think that we should have further discussion. Obviously, if we don't have any further discussion, to sway anyone either way, then we're gonna be in the same point that we are now.
I think Jeff is at his son's baseball game, and depending on whether they win, he said he might be able to be here, you know, around 8:30. I mean, we could text him and see if he can get here, or text him and see how he would vote, if that's allowable.
You have to be present to vote, and we'd have to be at a standstill for the meeting without a President to run the reorg meeting, according to law.
We have to be at a stand, it sounds, seems like we are at a standstill. Is that what you're saying?
Right, I mean, we can wait, or we can talk and have an actual conversation. I mean, we're at a standstill, we can't run the reorg meeting until we have our President in place, so we can sit here and wait and hope that Jeff gets here tonight if we want.
Is it, according to education law, everyone needs to be present to vote, or can we do it via, okay, okay.
Have to be physically here.
So, so since I've been attending board meetings prior to be, I see a lot of the same leadership, and I do, obviously, based on the team review we did manage to do this year, there have been a lot of issues that could've been easily corrected had we had leadership that was willing to do that. I mean, if we keep voting the same people in, then a lot of times you're going to get the same results. And I would like an opportunity to have some change, some positive change here, and work with everybody and a team, because it hasn't been able to be done with who we've had in those positions. And, you know, years is one thing, but just to say someone wasn't here for a certain number of years certainly doesn't mean that they don't have a vision and some leadership capabilities. For the nuts and bolts, that's the easy part that has to be done, your extra roles. It's the other part that's the challenging part, and where I definitely think that we need some corrections and some efforts here, and I'm definitely willing to do that. I've already identified things, I think as a group, we've identified things that came up at the board retreat, our review, and I've already thought about some things that I'd like to share and get going. But it's also the relationship, I mean, communications definitely need to be improved on the board side. Communications need to be coming from our leadership, and I haven't seen that happen over the last two years. The only communications I get is really from the district office. So that's one thing. And then you also have to be able to have that good working relationship with the district office leadership as well, and the answer to the superintendent. And it seems like there's been relationship that can be improved there, and I'm willing to work really hard at that, so there's this good collaboration on both sides.
Just to add to that, since you started coming to board meetings, I've never been in the leadership role since you started coming to board meetings. So I don't disagree with what you're saying, I'm just saying that you haven't seen what I've done when I have been President in the past years. I've tried to let others take who wanted it, and to try the leadership, I've let them go ahead and do it. I haven't really agreed with everything they do, but I didn't wanna step on toes at the same time either. So I think, I'm not gonna disagree with what you said about the past leadership, but on the other hand, when you started coming to meetings, I wasn't in one of those roles.
Actually, I did attend some meetings, you just didn't know who I was at the time. It was prior to Dr. Hamilton, and I saw you change seats, and I think it was Victor who took over. No, I didn't see you in that position as actual President, but I have seen you in Vice President, and we've had some issues, and I haven't seen as much help as I would've liked from a leadership person, person in leadership of helping correct that.
A lot of that was discussions I had with the board President, and if he's not gonna listen to me and do what he should be doing, I can't make him do it.
Part of the, part of the position is actually also making sure that we all are adhering to open meeting laws and following all of our policies and stuff, and I think I've pointed out numerous times where we haven't been doing that, and I just don't throw the information out there, actually do the research and make sure that I have the information to back it up, to make sure we are staying on track and operating the way we are supposed to be. And if we all disagree, that's okay, but when I'm wrong, I say that I'm wrong, and I have no problem admitting that I'm wrong, and there's not one person on this table who's gonna be able to do the perfect job, but I absolutely expect everyone to point it out to me, and constructive criticism is how I improve as a person, and also how the board improves as a person. In no way ever would I put the blame on anyone else, because that is part of the responsibility as a leader, that whatever happens, right or wrong, but especially wrong, you own it. And I'm willing to do that for the group.
So is this an open discussion now? I served as Vice President under Joan, and Joan did an outstanding job. Joan has a lot of experience with BOSI's, and those connections can be very valuable. There's a lot of things I'd like to say in an exec session that I don't really wanna say here, but I'll allude to them. Jen, you are the ultimate micromanager. You send hundreds, maybe thousands of emails all the time to the DO, driving the administration crazy. When I got back from my trip this summer, within a three-hour time period, there were 17 emails that involved you. My wife will say, "You got an email up there?" I go, "Oh, no, here we go." Last week, or last board meeting, you mentioned that you'd be doing the research. Research isn't the role of a board President, I don't understand what research you plan to do. But I think you want to be the Superintendent of schools and not the President of the Board. And I think there have been incidents that I was embarrassed by with you, which I won't go into detail, and I noticed the four people that support you are the new people who haven't really seen you in action that much. So I don't think you're an appropriate choice for President of the Board, and I don't mean to be mean spirited, I don't mean to be contrary to being pleasant, but that's the way I feel. And I, quite honestly, don't think that's an appropriate role for you.
Thank you for your comments, Jim. Unless you, I do not understand what you're saying about emails to the district office, because you would know what emails they are, because they're told to reply all. So let's just start with that, okay?
That's a relatively recent development, and...
And that, no, that has been the way we've operated since last year, when Matt told us directly, all of us, how he wanted us to communicate with him and how, and we've also talked about it in reviews as well. And I said how lucky we were to have a superintendent who directed us to communicate the way we do, because most superintendents are the micromanagers. And as for micromanaging, I have not told this district office employees to do one thing since I've been on this board. So unless you can give me an example, which I'm more than willing to hear, but I've given them no direction, in fact, I've actually done the exact opposite, because I hadn't liked what I've been seeing in leadership, which I've brought up in executive session numerous times during your setting laws, policies, and making the phone calls, to make sure we are doing things correctly. And I absolutely disagree with you when it comes to having to do research, because it's our due diligence to make sure we are making the right decisions for the community and the students in the district, and making sure we are abiding by all laws, policies and regulations in the state of New York and the New York State Education Department. So if you call that micromanaging and overstepping my bounds, I have to disagree with you, respectfully of course.
So, as the newest board member, and someone who has been knowledgeable about what's going on and has been involved, obviously, this is an uncomfortable conversation. And, you know, I think that there are an incredible amount of strengths around all of the table, around this table, and I think everybody brings a different perspective to it. But I do agree with Jen in the sense that I think it does give an opportunity to look at things a little bit differently. You know, I'm sitting here saying, "Okay, well then, what's the hap," I don't know if you can call it a happy medium, "but what do we do here?" I think that Joan brings an incredible amount of experience to this. I think Jen has, you know, an incredible amount of passion, and I do think that sometimes that can be misconstrued as micromanaging, or, I think micromanaging is the best word. I don't agree that she wouldn't be a good board President, but I think, you know, is there, rather than sitting, you know, is there a, I don't know, is there a compromise that we can look at without Jeff being here, or if not, we'll have to?
Just a second, Jeff's on his way. I'm asking for an ETA. I was suggesting maybe we could ask, since we have an informational presentation by Mr. Nelson, maybe we do that in the interim, so we can get some work done, out of the way rather. Or do we wanna continue this discussion?
I actually would like to address one more piece, since Kim brought up the micromanaging piece. For a number of those things, Jim, for you to state publicly, I really would hope that you would make comments like that and have hard examples. Emails from me that you, that some people would consider lengthy, I consider educational. You don't have to read them, but they have absolutely had to do with justifying my thoughts, and frankly, I was very unwelcome from the beginning, and I felt like really that's how I did need to communicate, so I wasn't having happen to me what you just did to me. I did need to communicate so I wasn't having happen to me what you just did to me, which you also did publicly when I was running. So that's clearly an issue between you and me, I guess, that I thought went away, but apparently not.
Can I just, you know what, I think we've all tried to speak openly and honestly. And so I think to come back at Jim with language that seems to blame him, I don't think we should go there. I think we should, I think we can have a respectful, open dialogue among board members and we don't have to talk about, you know, that Jim didn't welcome you and he-
Oh, I didn't say, I didn't say Jim. I didn't say Jim at that.
Negative, if I could just finish. And he's trying to be negative. I think, you know, he was, he was being honest. And so I think we just need to, in, in a meeting like this, we have to respect each other's opinions. And you've been able to speak openly and honestly. Joan's been able to speak openly and honestly and I think Jim deserves to speak openly and honestly. And he's giving you his perspective. Everybody has their own perspective and he was sharing his.
And he just shared something with the public with, the way things are usually done, with nothing to back it up. So that's, that's what I'm asking for, some examples. Because now the public thinks that I'm a micromanager and I've been incredibly hands off. Now, to emails that he's alluding to have been educational so you guys know, the team knows and understands why I have the opinions I do or why I say, "You know what, we can't operate this way because of X, Y, Z and here's the proof to do that, to back it up." Now, instead of having you guys read through policies and papers, I've tried to summarize that for you so you didn't have to do that. I did the work for everybody, which I don't mind. I think that's part of the role and how I am as a person. But to sit here and criticize my emails, when most of my emails, I assume that, I don't know, except they give me any examples, they're alluding to, I need some examples to understand, but I can't not sit here and allow him to do that and not ask.
I'm not, I'm not saying you do, Jen. I'm just saying, you know, I think we ought to have a respectful conversation without, you know, trying to attack each other personally and whether you felt welcome on the board or Jim, you know, attacked you before you were on the board and all that kind of stuff. He did start by saying, "I'd really rather discuss this in executive session because there are some specifics he wasn't comfortable, you know, talking about in the open." But we can't really have this conversation in executive session. It doesn't qualify for executive session, so.
And that's why I agree with Joan that team reviews are incredibly important. And I was asking where they were all last year and we didn't have any. In fact, when I was on the policy committee, that language was changed from shall to may. And after I recognized how awful everything was last year and how we weren't functioning as a team, I requested the policy committee to put that back in as shall and not may because it is incredibly important. Because this could have been taken care of last year when I was new on the board and identified the problems. But we didn't do it because leadership didn't think it was important, I guess. And I also pushed last summer to make sure that we had at least two team reviews this year, but only one made it onto the calendar. And I think, I think doing a team review at the end of the year really doesn't help a whole lot. It's more productive to do a mid-year so we as a team can identify issues and figure out how we're going to improve so we have another half of the year to actually execute on the areas we need improvement in, instead of doing them at the end of the year when we have turnover and it doesn't matter anymore.
Jen, we, we've had team retreats. We did the DISC assessment with the facilitator, I can't remember his name. We had, David, thank you. We had, we just recently had a very extensive conversation about how to communicate with Matt and how he was feeling, you know, like some of the communication was overwhelming and inappropriate. I think we've, this year, and I've, I haven't been on the board as long as some, but this year I did notice quite a change in terms of the opportunities to speak openly about the functioning of the board and how we interact with each other and how we communicate. So whether it was a team review or, you know, technically called a team review, I do think we've had several open and honest conversations with just the board about how the board functions.
We had a team, we had one team review. I wouldn't count David's. That was a learning about communication styles, but that really wasn't critiquing the job we were doing as board members, which is more of a team review.
But we finished the meeting with what does this all mean in terms of different styles and how can we function more effectively? We did close the meeting with that. I remember that.
Yeah, and that was at the beginning of the year and nothing in between the beginning of the year and end of the year to see how we were going to operate as a new team and moving forward and improving the second half of the year. But you can call, you can call whatever you want because we have had discussions, whether it's Matt's review and we may throw some ideas out there, but I wouldn't say that those were formal team reviews. Those were really more focused on our relationship with Matt, not us as a team.
Okay. I've gotten an opinion through Colleen Heinrich, who says that if you can't pick someone and the former president is still in charge, you can move on with the meeting, the meeting with Joan. Leading the meeting is current VP in the absence of a president. And you can do the vote later this evening or another day prior to the 15th of July. So that's our, from our attorney. So I suggest that we continue. If Jeff said that he was on his way, he's coming from Fayetteville. When he gets here, we can address that issue with all nine board members.
I think, I think part of the issue is, okay, so first of all, I just want to go on record and say, this is an incredibly functional board. I, you know, I have enjoyed my time on the board and I think that everyone, again, as I said, brings different strengths to the table. So I just want, for the public record, I think we've done a very good job of moving the district in the right direction. And, you know, I think we're lucky that there are two people that are passionate that want to serve in the presidency role. So I'm going to say that. I think part of the difficulty with Jeff coming in is that Jeff has not been privy to the rest of this conversation. And, you know, so how we do that, because he hasn't had the opportunity to hear what everyone else has to say, I think we have to figure that out as well.
I appreciate you saying that, Kim, because I think somebody listening to the last part of the conversation would think, "Oh, holy crow, you know, what, the, the school district is in the hands of these people that, you know, can't do anything, you know, don't have team reviews and they're not doing anything." I think we've done a lot in the time I've been on the board. I've witnessed, you know, the creation of a strategic plan, all the action plans from the schools. We've got a one-to-one technology program. We've seen certainly our considerable amount of academic success and athletic success and we've updated facilities and, you know, had budgets that have been overwhelmingly approved by the public. And so I think we have accomplished a lot and so I really appreciate you saying that because I think all of us that are sitting around this table like to feel like we're, this is time well spent and we're giving, you know, our blood, sweat, and tears to something we care a lot about and we hope we're doing a good job for the community.
I, I agree with Kim. I do think, I do think we are a very functional board. And I think we all bring something to the table. And I, there's team review, but there's team review with board self-assessment involved in that team review. And that's what we used to do. We used to have, in fact, sometimes to get the discussion going, we would have a form that actually was directly related to how you function as a team, that everybody filled out and they took it seriously. But some, I think over the years, some just don't take it seriously enough. And I, I think it was like, when I first did it years and years ago and started it, it was like, wow, this is, this is really helpful. And, and we haven't done that in a long time. You can have team reviews that are based on specific curriculum and certain things that we're looking at in the district and those are fine. Those are good too because we get in depth. But there's also, should be team review where it's, it's focused on how you function as a team and your own self-assessment. And this just, we started doing this, I mean, when we do the superintendent's evaluation, it ended up going into a board self-assessment. And we found out it was healthy and several districts started doing it and now it's just highly recommended. But we just haven't done it as we should be doing it. And it's sometimes been frustrating for me because I started, I did it at BOSEs, I still do it at BOSEs. And some people just bucket and don't think it's necessary, but I just think it's a real healthy experience when we have done it in the past. And, and I just, I, I just think it's something that we need to focus on. We started doing it twice a year, well, actually, we did it four times a year at one point. And then we did it, went to twice a year because you forget stuff. You get to a certain point in time and then all of a sudden it's like, if you just wait till the end of the year, you say, "Oh, yeah, it was like the first half of the year, I just remembered that." And something had happened. And, and that team, basically for that team review and board self-assessment is the governing team. It's the board and the superintendent with you where you do your self-assessment. It's not the rest of cabinet or anything because the superintendent is part of the team. And there's, there's different ways you can do it. Some, when we show them documents, it's like, oh, there's too many questions to answer. Well, I just think, I think we can find a tool, but I think that's what you need to do. I think it just makes a better board and I think you get a lot more accomplished. You see where everybody's coming from, you see where their thoughts are. And it's, it's been frustrating for me because even, you know, like I said, past leadership, you suggest them, you give them forms and, you know, you can't, you know, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make them drink. So you give them everything why and why it's important and they just, they just don't think it's important. And I, and I do. I think it's very important. And I think in the past, it's been very productive.
I absolutely agree. And I think that's one of the biggest issues that we've had since I've been sitting in the seat, that we haven't done that and we haven't done it effectively. And why it was changed in the policy, I have no idea why, what the reasoning was for that. That was my first part of the policy committee. I agree with everything that Christie said as well. To say here that I think that they are not functional as a board for the community, I think we've been making the absolute right decisions for the students in this district and the community. I wouldn't, I wouldn't disagree with you at all on that. I'm talking about the parts that the community's not privy to or I think that we can really improve, that we really can't discuss out here. And I've worked very hard at trying to show everybody the right way and backing it up with the things that we're supposed to be using to guide us. And I have done the work to do that every single time that I have identified an issue. And I think that's very valuable to make sure that we stay on track all the time. Our mistakes made, absolutely, because there's not one person around this table that's perfect. But we need to hold each other accountable. And I want and not afraid of anyone to tell me that I'm not doing something correctly, my reaction would be, "Oh, my goodness, can you show me where?" Because I want to make sure that we are doing this properly and correct this immediately. I'm not going to ignore it or come up with another reason to justify it that's not even affiliated or associated with that or put the blame onto anyone else either. That is part of being a leader, is being responsible and holding yourself accountable because really when a president is a president of a board, they're speaking for the board. And when mistakes are made, everyone's looking at the board president. And I would absolutely never, ever put that responsibility, whether I agreed with a decision or not, I would never put that onto anyone else and say, "Oh, that, that, I wasn't there when that happened" or "I didn't hear that conversation." That's just not me. I have very high expectations for myself.
So Joan, you want to take us through the meeting until, till Jeff gets here?
Yeah.
How's the board feeling?
What's the rest of the board going to do?
What's the board, rest of the board want to do?
I say we move ahead so we can get out of here. I mean, I mean, I can, we can do this, but we're obviously at a standstill unless anyone around here is willing to change the way. I mean, we can do another vote and see what happens, but based on what I'm hearing, there's not going to be much of a change. And I think we all could, I agree with Kim that Jeff wasn't here, but honestly, I really don't think, I think that Jeff will absolutely, he obviously would be the deciding factor either way and we should probably give him the courtesy to be able to vote. So what are we going to do? Are we going to do another vote and see what happens and then move on from there? Or?
We can do another vote.
Are we going to?
Why don't the board, does the board want to have another vote, say what the consensus is? Or do you want to have a vote to see, just let Joan continue the meeting? Somebody want to make a resolution for that? Is there a second? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, motion carried. Joan, you want me to come up there with you? Go through this? Oh, I will. I mean, I have it in writing, I've got the old-fashioned way.
It has to be B, right, under appointment of officers?
Yeah, appointment of officers is section, it's section four, items B through F. So we're going to do them in a group, yeah. This is section five is set up as appointment of officers. It's subsection B through subsection F. So that's the district clerk, clerk pro tem, claims auditor, internal auditor, external auditor.
That's, that's what I wondered. So is everybody okay with that, that we do these in groups? Denise, I know you're new, is that okay? Okay. And if you have any questions, just, once we get a move in second, just ask away.
There is a sheet that was sent to everybody that has the differences in red that you might want to take a look at, determine, you know, so that if you have any questions. Let me go get my sheet. Just in the interest of fairness, the changes in this five is under C, we added Tiffany Turner as a clerk pro tem to back me up. We changed the claims auditor rate from $42 to $43.25, which is 3%. The internal auditor, we increased the internal auditor rate from 18,000 to 20, external auditor, no change. District treasurer and deputy treasurer was, deputy treasurer was changed from Patty Perot to Tiffany Turner. Just so we're clear.
Yeah, and just, it's under approval of agenda, under the exec part, that paper. So if everybody wants to open it.
Oh, okay.
It's under the C, 1C approval of agenda on exec. If you want to follow along.
Do we call the question, Joan?
Well, we do, right now, we do five.
Five B.
The motion would be B, five B through F. District clerk and clerk pro tem of the board and receiver of legal documents, claims auditor, internal auditor, external auditor, school district treasurer and deputy treasurer. Now you need a motion.
So Kim and Jim, Tiffany?
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed?
Do we, I'm sorry, do we need, I'm just, when Vic was here, we made sure that we actually read the recommended action. Does that have to be, so?
What you're looking at is published online as part of our agenda, it's published in board docs for the whole public to see. There's no requirement to read these verbatim in the record.
Even the, even A. Resolve that the Board of Education approve appointment of officers pursuant to the following section four, items B through F.
Yeah, see, that was my concern too because-
Right.
So I think we're just reading A and then confirming.
Right, we have to read the actual resolution part first and ask for a motion.
That's what we did, appointment of officers, section four, items B through F.
Right.
Yeah.
No, you still-
No, no.
You still-
No, you still have to read what the recommended action publicly.
Yeah, resolve that the Board of Education approve appointment of officers pursuant to the following section four, items B through item A.
And then you ask for a motion.
So we got a move, we got a first and a second.
The only, we didn't read that before.
We did not.
That's the clarification. So I just wanted to confirm that. It's not, as long as we do that, I'm fine.
It's not written the same here.
I'm on 5A and there's a board resolution.
So that's all I have to read right here?
Yeah, resolve that the Board of Education approve appointment of officers pursuant to the following section four, items B through F.
Well, and that's why I just read B through F, just as additional.
It has to be the specific language, that's all. We did not read that section of it. So as long as we do that, we're fine.
So what you have to do is you have to read the recommended action and then ask for a motion.
We had a first and we have a second. Jim, you're still second.
I think Kim is questioning, are you questioning whether?
So resolve that the Board of Education approve appointment of officers pursuant to the following sections four, items B through F, district clerk and clerk pro tem of the board and receiver of legal documents, claims auditor, internal auditor, external auditor, school district treasurer and deputy treasurer.
You don't have to read the actual ones for A, the lettered ones, because B through F is letting us know that that's what we're, all you have to do is read the recommended action and then ask for a motion, first and second. And then if there's any discussion or questions, and then you put it up for a vote.
Well, I just read them for additional clarification, that's all.
Okay, because.
Because that's usually what we do at Bowse's.
Okay, because two years ago, that was done by Jeff and we were told that that was a waste of time and that's why it was changed this. So I'm just questioning because I just assumed that we'd be reading what was there. That's fine.
Regardless, I move.
So we still have the same second?
Okay. Any questions? Any more questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried eight zero. Approval of other appointments, resolve that the Board of Education approve other appointments pursuant to the following sections, five items B through, is that a Z?
Z through AA.
D through AA. Approval of other appointments, let's see, school attorney, school physician, central treasurer and deputy central treasurer, extra class, attendance officer, records access officer and records management officer, asbestos hazards, emergency response, local educational agency designee, chemical hygiene officer, school pesticide representatives, review official and verification official for federal child nutrition program, hearing official for federal child nutrition program, school district purchasing agent, assistant purchasing agent and deputy purchasing agent, section 504 chair person, committee on special ed, subcommittee on special ed, committee on preschool special ed, audit committee, liaison for homeless children and youth, title line officers, dignity for all students, act coordinators, certification of Baldwells Central School District Principal Evaluators, certification of Baldwells Central School District Lead Evaluators, district designation of OCM workers compensation consortium representative, designation of civil rights compliance officers, designation of external civil rights compliance officer, designation of Hon. Doug Cortlandt Madison Health Insurance Consortium Director Representatives. We have a motion.
So Matt and Jim.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Approval of designations, six items B through F, resolve that the Board of Education approve designations pursuant to the following section six, items B through E, official depositories, Board of Education, regular meeting dates for 2019, 2020, official newspapers and partial hearing officers, data privacy officer. I have a motion. Jim? John? Yeah, okay. Any questions?
Yes. Under official newspapers, it reads that the messenger be designated as the official newspaper. Can we just clarify that that's the Baldwinsville Messenger in the minutes or in the resolution?
Sure.
I mean, I understand that everybody would assume that, but since it's part of Eagle Newspapers, I would just specifically request.
We can make that change.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried eight zero. Eight authorizations. Resolve that the Board of Education approve authorizations pursuant to the following section seven, items B through H. Matt, Jim? You don't want me to read them? Well, I just figured publicly, then people know what's in their group.
We've never done it that way. Clarify, this year, or last year, we did not do it that way. That's fine.
Petty cash funds, authorization of credit cards, official bank signatures, official representative of the lead educational agency, certification of payrolls, authorization of intervention and real property tax assessment review proceedings for 2019, 2020, signature authorization for state education department, stack dash one and stack dash five. Any questions?
We talk with the people involved and we do adjust those periodically.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried eight zero. Faithful performance blanket bond, resolve that the Baldwells Central School District utilize a faithful performance blanket bond in lieu of specific performance bonds for the 2019, 2020 fiscal year. Do I have a motion? Matt, John?
Matt and Jim.
Any questions?
Jamie, can you just educate me on this?
What we do is we buy an insurance policy rather than go to a bonding company and do this. Years ago, you know, maybe 25 or 30 years ago, before insurance companies would be willing to do it, you would have to go actually have a bond and put a portion of that money for the bond. It was like self-insurance. We don't have to do that anymore. We just buy an insurance policy from Utica National that covers this. So we, so there's like a couple million dollars against me, you know, for my performance. Our treasurer has like a million dollars. So all these.
So it's basically a directors and officers type of insurance?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
Any other questions?
We don't, we follow the IRS and it could change quarterly, monthly, whatever that is. That's why the language is in here, we usually follow the, I think it's 55 cents, Tiffany? 58 cents.
Any other questions on the faithful performance bond, blanket bond? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried eight zero. Other items, section nine, items B through F, resolve that the Board of Education approve other items pursuant to the following sections nine, items B through F, policies, mileage reimbursement, building use fee, rates of pay for non-contract substitute personnel, 2019, 2020 school year, hourly rates of pay, non-contractual executive assignments, 2019, 2020 school year. Do I have a motion? Matt?
Kim?
Second. Any questions?
Yes. See, last year, I was afraid to ask any questions, my first meeting. The building use fee, is that only when school is not in session or is that charged to, how does that work?
I think it, the answer that, to that question would be it depends. Normally, if I have a small group of people that are going to use a room for, say, a Boy Scout meeting and there's 50 kids going to show up, they have three or four leaders, there'd be no charge from that if they were in a building because we have people there till 11 o'clock at night, Monday through Friday. Now, if the same group of Boy Scouts wanted to do it on a Sunday, I'd have to charge them because they have no coverage. So we allow them to use the building without charging for custodial coverage for smaller groups. Now, if I was going to be the Shark Swim Club and I'm going to have a meet here and I'm going to have 400 kids in February, you know, they're going to, they're going to, naturally because of the number of people, they're going to make a mess in the bathrooms, they're going to track, you know, salt and snow all through the building and, you know, and if this is on, you know, we have to have the building ready for, so if they did this on a Monday night, we might have to charge them for extra cleaning because I got to be ready at 7:30 in the morning for the staff and all the kids to show up. So that's kind of how that works. I just kind of use my judgment. We very rarely have had to do that. Now, on the weekends, it's a different story if they're working on, you know, doing a Saturday night or a Sunday and I have to pay somebody time and a half, they're going to get charged a hundred and a quarter. Because my coverage on Saturday ends at about three and then on Sunday, you have nobody. So we want custodians there to open and close the building. There is an exception to that to the athletic teams. So if the coaches, 15 of the varsity girls practicing on a Sunday afternoon, we're not charging athletics to use a building because we're here to support those kids, but we also do not assign a custodian to them. So they're kind of on the honor system and have been for seven or eight years. You know, leave the doors closed, you make a mess, you're responsible for it. It's a privilege, not a right to be able to do that. They've been very good. We have no problems with them on a, because I asked, they had custodians all the time, how are they doing?
Yeah, any of the, any of the extracurricular activities that I've been at, I think everybody's been respectful of the buildings and have done a great job. And, you know, even the people that are here, working the custodians and, you know, at some of the different tournaments that I've been at here, people are always, you know, very impressed with the condition of the school. I was just curious how we made those determinations.
We rarely have issues with groups who want to use the building. And quite frankly, they're public structures, I'd like to see people use them as much as they can, as long as they're not, you know, using that event to raise money for themselves and then refusing to pay us to cover the cost. Otherwise, they should be renting Jones Road. Because remember, we shouldn't be using tax-free properties to promote some other person's business or activity when they could go in the community and actually use one of our taxpayers' locations. So that's kind of how I do it. It's a long answer to a short question. What's that?
Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried eight zero. Conclusion of annual reorganizational meeting. Do we keep going?
Yeah, we just keep going. Correspondence and board activities.
Okay. New board member orientation luncheon. So Brian and Denise had a fun day, huh?
It was the.
This is first Ivan on here, the new board member orientation slash luncheon. So were you overwhelmed?
Got to pressure my mic on. There you go.
I don't know about over, it was a lot of information. It was, it was a lot of information. It was basically take where they're giving you all the documents and you can look at it when you get home. Because it was a lot to take in that day, but it was, it was good. I thought it was good. I thought it was a good chance to meet everybody, to meet the different people that we may be dealing with and it went well. I don't know.
I was, I'll piggyback on that. It was a lot of information. It was great to personally meet everybody that we'll be speaking with and dealing with. I think that by the end of the day, I kind of almost wish that we could have taken our meeting with Joan and Matt and kind of pushed that towards the end, kind of met everybody first and then, because I know I had questions at the end of the day, but we didn't really get a chance to meet again. So that's the only suggestion that I would have for next year.
I agree with that, too. Moving you two to the end, I agree that would have been much better.
Yeah.
Or coming back together at the end.
Yeah, the day, all the information during the day generated more questions. Yeah. I think with CNYSBA, we're looking at doing something in the fall as well as June next year. Because we've been putting a lot of pressure on Charlie that, because the people that do that volunteer. So that's why they do it once and they hate to ask them a second time, but yet the fall is so much better to schedule it. So they're going to schedule one for the fall, too. That's good. Much more to learn. Graduation, anybody want to speak on graduation?
Jim, I just wanted to let you know that when I got home, my son said to me, I'm really sorry, Mom, I didn't know you were going to kiss me. He's like, it wasn't that I didn't want to. And I said, note to self, in two years, when I give my daughter her diploma, we will practice it.
It was a fly-by-smooch. It was just.
You gave me a D minus, though, when I went back to my C. I will, the one thing I will say is, again, as a new board member, I really thought that I was going to be sad handing that first young gentleman, who's a very close family friend, his diploma. And it was absolutely amazing to me. The smile on his face and the aura around him was just absolutely incredible. And so that was a lot of fun. So I thought it was a great event. Our photographers didn't do so well, but other than that, and I know that they're, I know that they're already working on that for next year because there was a number of issues with that, but I mean, which is, that's fine. I mean, it is what it is, but I thought the event was fantastic. I thought all of the district personnel just did an outstanding job. I really enjoyed it.
It's the most inspirational thing we do in a year. And it's kind of funny because some of those kids basically sprint across the stage. They grab it out of your hand, give you this quick handshake and they're gone and others just kind of slaughter across and enjoy the moment. But it's really, I think, one of the happiest times for kids and the parents and it's just a wonderful occasion and I think we have a great setting for it. I wouldn't want to do it anywhere else now.
I know Joan and I went to Liverpool's graduation and we just happened to have, you know, people we were seeing graduate and they had the state fairgrounds and the sound system was so awful, you couldn't understand a thing that was happening the whole day. So I do, I like our venue. I think it's a wonderful event.
I would like to add to that. I think having it at a facility like that, that's so big, it doesn't keep anybody out. Our graduates don't have to be limited to a certain number of tickets. You have friends who want to see friends graduate who may not have family members who are left out of other schools because they don't have enough seating to accommodate everybody. I agree that the staff did an incredible job. I mean, just the coordination of all of that and the time put into that. I thought it went very smoothly. And to Kim's point, whether I knew the person giving the diploma to or not, the kids were walking across with a smile and that was really awesome. I'm not sure if this is customary for all school districts that have board members hand out their diplomas, but I think it's nice, it's not necessary, but I think it's nice, but especially when you can hand it to someone that you know as well and saw a lot of big smiles, which is nice.
No, it's not aliens. Well, anybody else?
Well, a number of us were at the fifth grade year-end celebration. And just like last year, it was terrific. I think they fine-tuned it a little more, made some improvements. And what's nice is they mix the kids up so they'll meet students from other buildings that they'll be, you know, in classes with next year at Ray. And luckily, we had a wonderful day for it and I thought it was great.
Anybody, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I was there. The kids had a lot of fun. I had a fifth grader who participated as well and just meeting some new friends was exciting for him. You know, he said he enjoyed all of the activities. I think the staff did a really good job. Talked to Matt afterwards and they had already started the document planning for next year where they can improve some stuff, some things that they'd like to add. So I just, that's one of the things I like about the district is as soon as something's done, they're already thinking ahead for next year and improving and making it better than it was. And I just think that's a great thing for us to do and have, that attitude.
My son was also a part of that day. I had the opportunity to visit each station and I thought it was phenomenal. The obstacle courses that they had were amazing. All the kids were smiles. I've heard great things from the community members, too, of parents, my son's friends. So all good things. I was very impressed.
And it was a conversation in the community that evening because I was up at the karate studio and I wasn't involved in the conversation, but I heard, you know, two parents talking about how great of an idea that they thought it was in making that transition over to Ray and just, you know, they're in their elementary schools and they don't realize how large their graduating class is going to be until that day when they all come together for the first time. And I, like I said, I didn't participate in the conversation, but just hearing that and being the physician I am was really nice to hear.
And I loved how the kids had their positivity T-shirts on. So that was great to see that.
I didn't dare try the obstacle course, but it was fun watching. It was really fun watching.
I think the principals all got stuck in there.
Anybody else have anything else I want to talk about? Yes?
I led a group of around sixty kids, which was a little difficult to, because they were all had so much energy. I think there definitely could be some improvements with the scheduling, but I do know that the people who helped organize it, they already are aware of them and they're working on it. But I thought the kids loved it. They definitely warmed up to the idea that they can make new friends, so I think that it's, it's amazing, and I wish I had it when I was in fifth grade.
Yeah. I know they had a lot of volunteers that pulled out the last minute. They were done with their finals and they decided they didn't want to volunteer, so I think they'll have to work with a few more juniors next year. Anybody else?
The volunteers are only open to the senior class?
I think most of them were seniors. And I'm not sure how Brandy does that, but I think that's where she's going to be checking next year to make sure-
Yeah, improvement, yeah.
-they all pull out, because it was, there were quite a few that pulled out.
Yeah, that's too bad.
Anybody else? We'll move on to consent agenda.
Yeah, there were no public requests to speak.
Okay, resolved that the Board of Education approved the consent agenda pursuant to the items listed. One second. Any questions?
Yeah, I just, so I want to keep on the table. We were looking at trying to reformat that special ed report to make it not, right now it kind of looks like the one that used to be, the very, you know, when I first saw it with all the detail on it, but to in some way summarize that. You remember?
I remember a conversation about that.
So I just want to keep that on the table as something that would probably be useful to try to digest that in some way, shape or form, you know, to provide some summary data. All the detail is kind of somewhat irrelevant to us, I think.
Yeah, I think the conversation was we weren't sure what was required by law. I'm not sure if we ever really got our answers. I said at the NISBA convention two years ago, I went to a special ed session that was a question that was raised by someone else in the audience as to what we're actually approving and what's supposed to be on there. They, you have changed a little bit. I mean, there's a little more of a summary here, you know, on the first page, the initial eligibility meetings ineligible and declassified for CSE and CPSE is new. I don't know if that came out of that last conversation that we had or not, to try and start that process of helping us understand what we're looking at so we can actually use it for improvements going forward.
We can look into that. I, I think the report is coming right out of IEP Direct, so it's not something we create. It's the service we buy through BOSI. Certainly, we could look to have them do a summary for us or-
Yeah, no, I just, in terms of kind of looking at, you know, what does our population look like and how is it changing over time, you know, I think that's the discussion we were having before. And, and you're right, John, that, that information is, the new students that were approved is on there, but kind of looking at, you know, maybe some trend data or something like that.
Well, we can talk with Danielle about that and see what kind of our data person can, can look at that report and give us some statistics and give you a couple iterations, you know, perhaps by this fall. That's a good idea.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just one that maybe Dave can answer. If you go down to page, I really don't understand this, and I'd like to, page four, page four it is, and the very last one on that page, for example, it says that the meeting date was, oh, I'm sorry, that was, that's not the right example. I didn't understand some of the dates because they weren't like declassified. And I, I asked Joe trying to getting an understanding about that. Let me find one here. Where the meeting date was during the current school year and then the Board of Education approval date, but the end date was the 2019 school year, but they weren't declassified. So what would be, yeah. So you know what? Because I'm, I've seen it more than once, oh, here, actually, I think it's the top one. It's one of those. The meeting date was in March and was up for approval at this board meeting. The decision is classified, but we're approving the end date. I guess they're grade seven, so when is it set up for them to get their services for next year? It's not working here.
So what happens is, is if there's an initial eligibility meeting during the school year, that student may have two, and it's close to the end of the school year, the student may, that could count maybe as his initial, and there's also annual review meeting because it's so close together that they want to hold another meeting at that school year. So there'll be two IEPs that are generated. One IEP will be the IEP that's generated for the initial meeting and start the services and end date at the end of the school year. And then there'll be another IEP that is generated with the start date of the following school year.
On this one though, isn't it, I mean, they're going to BOSI's OCM SED, so does that have something to do with it? I mean, I guess, I don't want to get too far into the weeds on this one. I think it would be helpful to kind of have just a better sense of what the dates are, I think.
The date, the date should be the start date of the school year regardless, unless there's a different start date for a program. The start date could happen during the school year if it's initial eligibility meeting, but once there's an annual review, that, those start dates are always, you know, whatever the first day of the following school year is. Are you just concerned because of the board meeting or the board approval time of that? Or just the, just the start date and end date?
Yeah, I was just curious, because the end date was 2019, but the students in seventh grade are still classified. I didn't know whether that was just an error in the date and it wasn't changed over for their services. I'm assuming if they're classified, they're still continuing them, but based on your explanation, there's probably another one with that ID number somewhere else, maybe for next year, which obviously I wouldn't go all the way through looking. I was just curious and whether there's an error on the date, that's all. I wasn't sure how it worked. Okay.
Those are just the start and end dates for the services during that school year. So the board date, and you see the meeting date up here, that would be the, when the student was actually started those services. I'd have to look at that. There could be, but I'd have to go through and, and check on the individual ones to see if there was an error. Sometimes they forget to put the, change the start date.
I just want to make sure, because we're approving it, that the student is getting what they need for the next school year, and they're all set up because we're not having another meeting until the end of August.
Any other questions? It might be good just to kind of review that to make sure things are accurate on this when they do it. Any other questions on the consent agenda? All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie, eight zero. Leadership report.
We're in luck, there's only one. That's going to be Mr. Nelson.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me? All right, who's running the slideshow? David, thank you. All right, brief overview of transportation. Those of you that have been here for a long period of time, you've probably know most of this information except for the particular data facts, going to throw it out at you, but for the new people, this might be interesting for you. Transportation, our mission statement, to facilitate access to the Baldwinsville educational experience that will extend the horizons of this district's students and propel them to the educational excellence by providing quality transportation services that are safe, efficient, and economical. Any questions there? Thank you. Next. All right, transportation, a breakdown of really what we are, the elements of transportation. We're comprised of drivers and attendants. Those are our worker bees that go out there every day and, you know, deal with the community and drive around and pick up, interact with the kids and bring them back and forth to school. We have dispatch, the individuals that from a distance drive, or what the drivers do, and they interact with the, the parents that call in. Clerical slash nineteen A, clerical are the individuals that back up dispatch and push the papers and keep everything moving. Nineteen A is the governing body of New York State that is everything yellow, and we have to adhere to everything that they put out at us. Maintenance side, obviously self-explanatory, all the mechanics and everything that goes along with that. And admin, I'm the only admin, so that's me. Any questions with that? Okay, next. Okay, the logistics of what we do, a real brief overview. I'm taking numbers off from last school year. That's always going to ebb and flow a little bit depending upon our student body. We had a hundred routes when we closed out the year, twenty-five special ed runs, four private parochial runs. And now when I say the private and parochial, those are ones that were specifically designated for that solely for private and parochial. And as you can see, as we move on, I'll clarify that a little bit. We had, we serviced ten different special ed locations outside of the district. And embedded within our hundred routes, there were also fourteen other private parochial schools that we also serviced with the, the regular runs as well. We have approximately fifty-five hundred kids. We have to provide fifty-two hundred seats on those buses, and with that, we travel about one point three miles every year. Oh, one point three miles? Yeah, I wish. One point three million miles a year. Highlights throughout the year. We're really focused on customer service, and with that, myself and my staff, we've done Dale Carnegie and different things of that nature to help how we communicate and better service our community, continuing training there. Some other things that we've done, last year we piloted it and now we're continuing to do that with the wifi in the buses. We've seen good reception with that. How we use that is specifically for like the special ed kids that need, you know, diversion while they're driving, they need, you know, help. They can, you know, log in and get wifi services on the buses with their iPads and things of that nature. It helps ameliorate, you know, discipline issues and just, you know, keeps the kids happy while they're going back and forth. And we do also use it on some of the longer runs to go back and forth to Cortland and to BOSI's. What we're always doing every year is we're basically fine-tuning and honing the GPS system that we've been using for the last four years. But it is such an involved system that, you know, all the time and every year, we figure out new ways to utilize it and implement it and prove what we're doing. One of those was the app that we rolled out last year. That's been a great success. Feedback from the community with that has been, you know, resounding. Everybody's loved it. Basically, what it does is it lets you track your student's bus ride back and forth to school, so they can see when you're coming. You know, they're not standing out in the rain for fifteen minutes, they can know when the bus is coming around the corner. Positivity project, you know, that's one of the programs that are being pushed big in the schools. Well, what we did is we partnered with each individual school, and, and the bus drivers have been really great in working with that. So we're trying to carry over everything in the school that they do and, you know, put posters and interactive stuff on the bus too to carry that over as well. You know, that, that's been really, you know, good with the kids too. They like that. Another big thing that's coming up, the new buses that we're getting this year, and actually they should be in in probably two or three weeks. And moving forward, they're going to be equipped with the electronic stability control and collision mitigation system, very similar to what's in your cars currently. Not only will it, you know, put power to the tires that slip, you know, reduce powers to, reduce power to the tires that are slipping and, you know, put power to the tires that, that's gripping to help you control and turn better, but one of the big things is it'll give you audible warnings if you're trying to turn into a lane and there's a vehicle there that you can't see in a blind spot. And one of the biggest things is if you're traveling down the highway or even coming to a stationary object or a car stops right in front of you, even if you're not aware of that, that bus itself will stop that vehicle. So that was a huge thing. Any questions? Next slide. And to close it out, what we did is we did a comparison of neighboring districts in the area. As you can see, District A, B, and C, compared to what we are, we've got another district with a hundred and seven routes, eighty-five routes, eighty-one routes. Baldwinsville closed out with a hundred. And the next one I'd really like to bring your attention is really something that I'm proud of, and I got to give the credit to the guys that actually do it. If you look at the number of vehicles serviced per district compared to the number of mechanics, B-Ville is doing it with the least number of mechanics, and we're doing, and those guys are doing a great job doing it. Twelve mechanics, you have a head mechanic and a body mechanic, you have eighty-five runs, nine mechanics, eighty-one runs, seven mechanics, one head mechanic, one body, one specific bus washer. And with us, we're doing a hundred runs, and we're doing it with only six mechanics. No head mechanic, you know, they, those guys are self-governing and self-motivated, which I think is really great. The amount of work they, they do is phenomenal. In addition to that, if you also looked, we're also mirrored the same way with the office staff that we have. Hundred and seven runs, you have one director, four dispatchers, two clerical staff. Eighty-five runs, one director, one assistant director, three dispatchers, clerical staff. And eighty-one runs, one director, one safety officer, two dispatchers. Baldwinsville is doing it with a hundred runs, one supervisor, three clerical staff, and three dispatchers. Again, I believe it's just doing the most that we can with the least. It's what we're always trying to do. DOT pass rates comparable, eighty-three point three, eighty-nine point six, ninety-nine point ten. B-Ville, eighty-nine point four. And as a matter of fact, just about five o'clock today, I got an email, we actually got our DOT rate for, came in today, we are eighty, ninety-eight point eight instead of the listed ninety-eight point four. So, you know, we actually went up. On the Jamie side, how much we spend doing what we do, hundred and seven run, or excuse me, a hundred and seven routes, eight point five million, eighty-five routes, six point six, eighty-one routes, five point eight. B-Ville, a hundred routes, we're doing it for eighty-five, four, and that's the lowest on the board. Any questions?
Yeah, I've got a question. As we look into contracting with maybe the town, the village, or whatever other entities to do some of their work in enlarged vehicles, will you have enough mechanics and enough staff? Or will we need more out there at the new facility if we take on some of these added responsibilities?
That we would definitely have to add manpower to.
But we will be contracting with them, and that should provide income to help with that expense, right?
Correct.
I'm sorry. When is, I'm not aware of that. Has that been discussed? It hasn't been discussed at any board meetings I'm aware of.
Well, we've been, we've been talking about it for probably five years before we even decided to, got permission to build a new facility in two thousand and sixteen. I did have preliminary conversations with the village and the two towns. That would be, would they be interested in us doing some of their fleet management? Some of them are more interested in doing it than others. You know, the town of East Stand wants to abandon their fuel facility and buy fuel from us, and they're only about four or five hundred yards away. We already sell fuel to the village. We sell fuel to the fire district, so we're going to, you know, we charge them an extra, a nickel a gallon, and we use that money to pay for the cost of the EPA compliance and those kind of things. But to go back to having an interminable agreement with other people, other districts, I mean, other districts and with the towns is that, you know, we have a state-of-the-art facility. We're going to have more room. We designed it and put lifts in strong enough to pick up a whole highway truck full of sand, sand or saw for that reason. Because, you know, the other towns, the towns and the village are having a tough time finding talented mechanics and come and work for it because they're onesie-twosie kind of a thing. Some people are in the process, they're, they're going to have their mechanics retire in two to five years. What do you do with that? So I think that what we'd like to do, I envisioned is if I hired a person, a mechanic, to take care of some of this work, we wouldn't hire anybody unless I had a contract with the two towns and the village, so we'd have some income coming in. But if we could, you know, sell eighty thousand dollars of the services and, you know, make another twenty or twenty-five on top of that, we could probably live in the new building, you know, break even as far as outside the debt service. Now, the state of New York is going to pay eighty-five percent of the building cost over the thirty years' life of the building, and our taxpayers are going to pay fifteen, but if I could make twenty-five to forty thousand, we could pay for the heat, the light, and the insurance costs on that building. So we all have the same set of taxpayers. If we can work it out and still have conversations with them that are fruitful, I mean, that's an opportunity for us. I think we got to look at what else can we do to, you know, take some of the pressure off our taxpayers, because the town has the same set of taxpayers. off our taxpayers because the town has the same set of taxpayers. So we'll see. You know, that's something new for districts, they haven't had that kind of relationship. Now, Salve has had their buses repaired for years at West Jenny, and I have their agreement and I have their rates and how they figured all that stuff out, so if they, we already have a basis in fact of some other school district and another municipality having that relationship, well, we can just imitate that with the contractually. So I'm kind of encouraged and I'm, once we get closer to having the building completed, we'll have, we'll formalize those conversations and I'll actually go with Dana and two or three of us will go meet with them, we'll have them tour the facility, we'll do all that kind of stuff, and then have a serious conversation about how we can mutually assist each other. Because I think I can beat their rates that they pay commercially, even with our CSEA contract. At least that was true two or three years ago, last time I looked at it in depth, I don't think that's changed.
Can I just ask a couple of questions? So at a policy meeting, we had talked a little bit about, it had come up around, I don't even remember, but there had been some discussion about how kids could, should, or could, or can't get on the same bus but at a different stop. And we had talked about doing some sort of educational or some sort of, I don't even know, pamphlet, something that we were going to send out to parents and families at the beginning of this school year. Have we started working on that yet?
Yes, absolutely. This is the period of time right now where we start communicating everything for the upcoming school year. Yep, that's definitely going to be mentioned. Mileage back and forth to private parochial, this is when we send out all the communications to all the families.
Okay. And then my next question, so I understand that there had been some issues with coaches taking district vehicles to a couple of various areas, and my question is, are we working on an educational something so that when coaches or teachers or whoever are using district vehicles for something, that they know exactly what the rules are related to, you know, maintain, making sure that things are tied down if they're lacrosse bags or golf bags or whatever they might be, as well as making sure that they know that, you know, well, actually, do suburban's have to also travel fifty-five?
Yes.
Okay. So making sure that they know all of those things and know exactly what they need to abide by?
Yes, most definitely. One of the things we're putting in place is we're going to use the same written test, which of course, before that would be accompanied by the same material for them to study and have knowledge of, demonstrate competency, same as a driver, then they could be certified at a drive.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Is there a reason we don't know what school districts A, B, and C are? Quite often, we compare districts for other reasons and their names are up there, it's West Jenny C or North Circus or Liverpool or whatever, but I was just kind of curious as to which districts these were and what we were comparing ourselves to.
Well, I would say that in the interest of not besmirching a fellow school district, you know, we prefer to keep the names quiet. I mean, if you look at the size of it, you can kind of, if we do traditionally compare it to several schools, you can figure that out by looking at the numbers.
I don't know if these statistics would besmirch anybody, but I was just curious as to what districts had these kinds of statistics as far as.
Let's just say they're area districts compatible to us.
I wanted to call one District L and another one District N-C.
You completely stole my thunder.
Dana, whether or not we know the names of the districts, we know how many routes they do and then what kind of resources they have, so this is really impressive in terms of the efficiency with which you go about your work and I hope you'll pass along to your team that it is really impressive to see, you know, what they're able to do with the resources they have. And I just have another question, we've been hearing a lot about the challenging situations that some of our teachers are dealing with in the classroom, and it strikes me that once these same kids get on the bus, you know, they're able to, you know, really cut loose and I'll bet there are some similar situations the bus drivers are dealing with. And I'm just wondering if you can give us a sense of how, what kind of preparation the drivers receive to, you know, manage behaviors on the bus?
Well, first off, thank you very much for that compliment, I will definitely pass it along. It's not what I do, it's what all the other people do, they're the ones that really do all the work. But with the challenging of school bus runs, there's probably three or four that are, let's say, need a lot of attention. We've been very lucky, you know, the drivers know astutely before they bid what runs are what runs and what's associated with them. People have stepped up, the right people in the right places have stepped up and take over those routes and really done, you know, a bang-up job on working with those kids. Not, and I'm going to say, not handling those kids, but actually working with them. They've done a great job of it.
I would imagine the positivity project will contribute in a positive way at the risk of being redundant to all of that.
Yeah, most definitely, that's given them tools to work with and help guide the kids.
Amy?
I just wanted to say that also, those routes are also, in pretty much all of our attendants and many of our bus drivers have been trained through, we have CPI training, we have in-district trainers, which is our Crisis Prevention Institute, and they train the drivers and attendants on de-escalation techniques and safety techniques to support those students. So if a student's, you know, becoming aggressive or having a meltdown, they've been trained on, you know, how to, you know, have a verbal communication with those students or how to position themselves with the students to help de-escalate, as well as also, I know Dana has worked with the drivers and dispatchers and attendants to talk about how to communicate about the students when they're calling for help so that they're not singling students out and things that might escalate those students. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there too.
I'd just like to make that additional comment in terms of, you know, you mentioned working with those students instead of managing them. And that's what I've been impressed about, about the whole department, is the pride that they have and the relationships, the relationships the drivers have with their kids, the pride that the mechanics have in putting out a safe and clean and well-running vehicle, but the whole department, the pride that they have and the work that they do, and that really shows.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? It was nice, I always take note of the square miles, how much larger we are, because there's so many times you want to do something creative and you're limited because you have so many, you're the largest district person square mile then, anybody else is. Very rural. Thank you, Dana.
Thank you guys very much, and for the, I've, you know, said this to the board many times before, but directly to the new board members, if at any time you want to come down to the Transportation Department, give me a call, send me an email, feel free to come on down. I would especially encourage you to do that before we make the transition into the new facility so you can really appreciate what we're leaving and, you know, what we're going into.
Yeah.
Definitely, thank you, I will do that.
Perfect, thank you. Have a good evening.
Trip request for reading, girls volleyball.
Just to point out on both of them, they've, they're indicating that they're missing a school day, but I believe the eleventh is no school. At least it wasn't my calendar.
This is the first reading, so we can correct that.
Yeah, also, on the girls volleyball, there's no number of athletes listed to make sure we're in compliance with the one to ten ratio, I guess we kind of need to know how many will be going on that trip.
Max is sixteen.
Okay, so can we make sure they have sixteen in there then for the second reading?
Speechless tonight, huh, Dave?
That was Tiffany's too. Wait a minute, that one worked out. With the trip request? That's the second one tonight, Dave.
So with the trip request, both of these trips, my understanding is that they're both just the basic, they're the annual trips that both the volleyball and the cross-country team does every year, so there's nothing really new or changes to those trips, so I don't know if there's any questions about that, but.
I just noticed that the date was.
Yeah, no, I'll take a look at that too.
Anybody else has any other questions? We move on to new business. For the second reading, resolved that the Board of Education approved the Baldwinville Central School District policies, series seven thousand, review revised pursuant to the attached, do I have a motion? Jen, second. Matt? Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed, carried eight zero. Board of Education Standing Committee assignments. Resolved that the Board of Education approved the Board of Education Standing Committee assignments for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty pursuant to the attached, do I have a motion? Jim? Jen, second. Now Denise had a question about that, and I think we probably should discuss the committee assignments at some point, if not now, and we could table this if you wanted.
Denise, I think I have something that is workable with your schedule because you obviously can't make it to technology committee meetings due to the time that they meet and you have an interest in communications, so I've enjoyed serving on the communications committee meeting and I think that we have a lot more transparency with some of the changes that we've made. I'd like to continue with that, I know that's pretty important to you, so if you want to swap, I have more time during the day to meet the meeting times, the technology committee, I'd be more than willing to change with you.
She's already on the communication.
No, she's not, she's not on the communication, she's on technology, so I'd be willing to swap with her.
No, so, right, so I think when I had emailed the board.
Oh, they changed it.
I was originally assigned technology and health insurance. Technology meets during the day, which is my understanding.
Right.
I just want to mention, we, at the last meeting, and really, you know, whatever you guys want to do, but at the last meeting, we asked if RJ could change those meetings because a few of us have difficulty getting to the meeting during the day, and so I don't know if RJ ever thought about that or if there was ever any follow-up on that, but, you know, whatever you guys want to, want to do, but I would love it if he changed it to later in the day, even, even if it's later in the school day, because it's usually like noon to two or something like that, like right smack dab in the middle of the day, so it's hard if you work to get there.
What time would be better for everybody if you did want to change it, four o'clock or?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Well, it may be difficult because there are a lot of staff on that.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's a heavily.
Staff-driven committee.
Yeah. So, you know, in terms of.
So all the ones that are staff-driven, code of conduct is one, and that usually, I mean, even if you do like three o'clock, I can't remember what time did we really start, was it around three or three forty-five even, or three thirty? Now, yeah, code of conduct, it's somewhere around three because I remember having to, if you don't get there early, you got to park somewhere way away from those buses up there and makes it a little difficult, so, yes. No, but three is still better than noon.
Noon or eleven thirty.
Yes.
I do have a question, so this is different, what I'm looking at right now is different from.
We took your, Lynn Vee came and talked to me this morning and we looked at your email, and Matt had declared his willingness to give up a spot on communication to give it to you, Denise.
Okay, thank you.
So that's what we chose to do, since we heard, those are the two, we heard from you and Matt. So we decided that, just made a command decision today to change that and put these in here and see if you guys would, now that doesn't mean you have to stick with these, we could table it and do it again some other time, but.
I think you're always bringing up the motion.
That's correct, anytime. Don't forget to hit your button the next time you talk, talking for the record. He can't hear you, I can hear your pine.
Did anybody else have anything they wanted to talk about on committees?
Sure, you can add me to technology anyway, to make it four on that one. Does anybody else want to switch or are they happy with what they are? I see Matt, you gave up communications and you're on two, did you want to sit on any other ones?
I just said I can fill in wherever need be, we usually try to keep them, I think, less than five, just so that there's not a quorum even though they are public meetings anyways, but, you know, we do have tendency to do that. If somebody wants to come off one, that's fine with me, otherwise, I'm, I'm okay, I'm my, I'm flexible enough at work where I can make those daytime and early morning meetings.
If we have five, that's a quorum, and you can't have five official board members on a committee, but actually, I think we decided extra people could go, but they couldn't participate or vote, but if they were really interested in what was going on, they could go observe.
Yeah, that was, I remember when Denise and Brian met that morning, that you may have committees, but committees are open meetings, so if you still want to attend the meetings, you're still kind of attending meetings, be if you want to learn what they're talking about, and it's, they're there on the schedule, so.
Because we have the, you know, the BTA president comes to policy.
Yes, yep. So with the changes, we can approve it now with the changes that you guys have accepted, and Jen, you're going on tech, technology?
Yeah, that's fine.
We can approve them?
Yeah.
Okay. So we had a motion and second, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor with changes? Opposed? Carried eight zero. Yes, school lunch prices, resolved that the Board of Education approved the Baldwinville Central School District proposed school breakfast and lunch prices for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty pursuant to the attached, do I have a motion? Matt, Kim? Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried eight zero. Resolved that the Board of Education approved the twenty nineteen, twenty initial AS seven contract with Underdog Courtland Madison Bosse's pursuant to the attached, do I have a motion? Jim? Jen? Any questions?
I do have a question. You know, I know that a lot of the special ed stuff is driven by IEP, there are some other programs, I think, in there, like the CTEs, the, those kinds of things, and I noticed changes in numbers, and what drives those? Is it anticipated demand, is it, you know, we had students that were interested, they got closed out last year, I mean.
All of those. So we all submit our stuff and it's sent in our requests back in January prior to the final budget being put in place. And then, when the Board of Ed in the April timeframe, you know, that's so many days before the public vote, approves the budget to go to the voters, it includes the cost of Bosse's that we know of at the time. Now, most of the things that are in here are moving around a little bit, but it's, again, just a snapshot. This is the month, most of these are in our budget as they exist, and we group them under certain things. Now, yes, you are going to have different number of children in SED planned for today than might SED be in October, SED program in February, and then who, how many people were at that SED program through the whole year when they come and go. So they're going to charge us based on the number of kids and the time they were in those seats.
And we plan for that with the contingencies?
We plan for that by putting fund balance on the budgeted side of, for SED and the special ed programs in those twenty-two fifty codes. So there's about a half a million dollars in there to allow for those children moving in, children moving out, or increased cost of programs because fewer schools decide that they want to hire those programs, so, all of the above, it's a moving target all year round.
Yeah, I just, I noticed the non-special ed programs and some of the changes there, so I was kind of curious in terms of, you know. So I was kind of curious in terms of, you know, do we have, do we have more students interested in those, and we're trying to get them seats and that kind of thing?
I think we, we have looked at that as a cabinet and tried to make more room for CTE seats because there seems to be more interest in those seats by our kids. So our students and our families are exhibiting an interest. So we, we tried to, sometimes there's a delay because we work with guidance. And we end up having more students that want to go in than we budgeted for. And maybe we have enough fund balance to get those few kids in. And then the following year, do, you know, do more of it. Some of them, it's bizarre how they do it. It's, we're charged the following year based on our student count in October. October of the prior year is driving with the cost. So in October of 18 is driving some of the costs for those seats for the whole 19-20 school year. And then you throw, you put a bunch of more seats in there. And then, so you're, so one year lag. So in 2021, so say if we had 20 more CTE seats, we're not going to pay for those 20 this year. We'll pay for them the following year. So there's, each one of those individual courses has a different set of rules that are associated with it. And Tiffy and I look at those rules and we make sure that they don't change. Because sometimes you get charged for the number of seats you use. Sometimes you get charged for the number of seats you put on that piece of paper, whether you use those seats or not. So we have to be kind of work with, with the guidance departments to make sure that, you know, if they want four kids to go in that program, that those four kids go. So it's a balancing act, depending on what the needs of the kids are. And there's more and more programs every year that students are interested in, so.
But not all Bosse's budgets that way.
Pardon?
Not all Bosse's budget that way.
Our Bosse's budgets this way.
I know, but I mean, not all.
I think there's, there's rules, differentials in all Bosse's because they cannot finish the year with any positive fund balance position. So unlike school districts, so we have fund balance on the revenue side, we have fund balance on the expense side. Bosse's are not allowed by law to do that. So they analyze all the, all the schools, put in their costs, and they build their budget based on those requests for services. So if, you know, they used to have a program where 45 kids now, and now there's only 30, they're going to have to lay off staff or do something different in order to be able to do that program. Because they have to finish every year at zero. And then what they don't have at zero left, we get as a refund.
Refund, yeah.
That's how the Bosse's, Bosse's is kind of a unique animal in that way. They're very restricted in the amount of fund balance they can collect. So they're budgeting pretty tightly. And I think some of the rules are designed to relieve some of that stress. So if you say, if everybody, your seats are in October, that's what you're going to get charged for the following year, that helps them pre-plan their budget, especially for some of those CTE courses that are very expensive to run because they're high technology use and things like that. They're more expensive for them to operate. So that's kind of a compromise. The school superintendents get together and agree to those rules with the local DS, the district superintendent, the head of Bosse's. An interesting animal. Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried eight zero. Resolved that the Board of Education approved the Bosse's tech lease for a phone system pursuant to the attached. Do I have a motion? Jim? Jen? Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried eight zero. Resolved that the Board of Education approved the emergency application of herbicide vegetation control treatments as specified below. Do I have a motion? Matt? Jen? Any questions?
Jamie, this looks pretty routine. I guess probably the track this year doesn't have things growing up through it.
No, we don't.
Okay.
Since the treatment, and, you know, our whole goal with some of this stuff is not to do it at all. So we did it last year, and it doesn't need it this year.
Well, now that we have an all-weather infield, we're not spreading grass seed out there.
That's correct. Well, there's no birds spreading it.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried eight zero. Item G, resolved to approve change order CO 00001 for $12,827 to SJ Thomas Company Inc. for additional asbestos abatement of Baker High School Pursuit to the Attached. Do I have a motion? Matt? Jen? Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried nine zero. And we are down to Board Roundtable.
Okay, so we have open discussions and email communications. Who wants to start that? I think we started talking about some of that. But I actually have some additional questions. But if someone wants to get us started, maybe some of my questions will be answered. But if not, I can go back to it. But I think Jeff is the one who requested that this get put on the agenda. So maybe he should start with it.
Yeah, it's been a couple of weeks. But I think this generated from, there was a significant amount of email and significant lengthy emails on some topics in the past. And then that generates typically some continued discussion by people feeling to respond. So I just wanted to bring it up, especially with the, the new members. And congratulations and welcome. Sorry I was late. About how the board feels about that. I know, you know, for newer members, you know, everything we do is foilable in emails. And I think our goal is to be open and transparent in many of the things. I think we could make the argument of the things that are being discussed on email are things that should be discussed at this table versus email. So there are certain things like logistics and should something be on the agenda. But I think what I personally saw was that things were getting discussed more in depth in emails than what should have been done in email. So I just wanted to bring it up, you know, hear the board's opinions. And that's why I requested that it be put on the open agenda.
So if it's supposed to be done in open session, I imagine you have some examples so we understand what emails you're talking about.
I don't have specific example. I can bring them up. Sorry for the, again, just coming in.
I think it's important that you bring it up because you're kind of leaving it out there that we're not acting with integrity and doing things that we shouldn't be doing.
You're putting words in my mouth, Jen, that I did not say. I just wanted to bring it up, that I thought more business was being done in email than should be.
And I asked for an example.
Okay. I will pull up some of your emails then. Thank you.
Just to let you know, I'm not sure because I, I'm a big, I look at the Committee of Open Government, open meeting laws. I talked to Bob Freeman about some of the things that we do to make sure that we are doing things correctly because we need to protect ourselves all the time. Email correspondence and giving each other information so they can have a thorough discussion in public session is allowed. I don't believe that there's been any decision-making done in emails. But if you don't want the information sharing so we can have good conversations in open session, how do you propose that we get that information so we don't have to wait two or three meetings until we can actually discuss it?
So I asked that this would be on the agenda for the board to discuss what they thought was appropriate discussions in email, not to bring up all of your emails and let's read them out and discuss what's inappropriate or not inappropriate. So this was not the intent of this being on the agenda, as you're inferring. I would like to discuss what the board thinks is appropriate communications. That's what I asked to be put on the agenda. If nobody has any opinions on that, I'm glad to move on to the next item on the agenda.
There must have been an email that you saw that you weren't comfortable with for you to ask for.
I'm going back several weeks when I requested this agenda item. If you give me a minute, I will gladly bring some up. If that's, the intent of this is to find examples and for me to read them out loud. If the, my intent was for this board to discuss as a whole what we think is appropriate communications. If you want to make this personal, that's fine. I am asking that we talk about this as a board.
Okay. And I'm making a statement that, which I'm allowed to, that we are allowed to share information in email so we can have productive conversations out in public.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, that's good.
I'd like to hear from the board of what they believe is appropriate communications by email versus some of the in-depth conversations and lengthy emails we have. That's what I would like to hear. So if any board member has any opinions on what we should be doing by email, I'd love to hear it. And while we do that, I will find some examples.
I think that the back and forth exchange gets a little much sometimes. But, you know, the one thing that, that I feel is important is whenever there, there's an email sent to the administrators that it gets copied to everybody. You know, because it, it can be a common, kind of quick response, just to hit reply. And the administrator may not have the time to put all of the people into response. So, you know, that's one thing I would like to request in terms of email communication, that if, if any of us were to send an email, and I think, you know, in Matt's absence, he, he mentioned that he would prefer at this point have the emails go through him, but to have everybody copied on that, that question or, or comment that's sent in.
Okay. I just want to bring up that we decided as a group last year how we were going to communicate. And it's also been brought up in reviews, that the way Matt has chosen to run things is very different. And I keep stressing that as to how lucky we are, so he doesn't get bogged down by emails. And we, he allows us, which most superintendents don't, that we can email the cabinet as long as he's copied on that. Now, I do agree with what you say. It is, and I actually discussed this with Matt, because his life should be made easier and just copying everyone. But to say that someone was not following what was agreed upon probably isn't.
That's not what I'm saying at all.
Okay, so.
What I'm saying is, is moving forward, that's one thing that I'd like to request.
Yeah, oh, okay.
I'm not saying anything about.
So you don't have a problem, so you're not like questioning, because it's, I can tell you that the emails that I send to Matt or the cabinet, Matt has always been copied. And I can tell you that they always reply all, which is exactly what we disagreed upon doing.
And that's, and that's fine. You know, and that's something that kind of we, we had been operating under in the past. My point is, is moving forward. I think that it, it's helpful to me if I'm not copied in, you know, four steps down the string, and then kind of going back and, and trying to follow it.
I think that they've been pretty good with replying all to the initial responder, but there may have been a couple that have gone by.
There's been, there's been, that's why I'm saying that, you know, if somebody's on their phone at, at something, and they're trying to respond, and, you know, and it's, it's probably typically Matt that's responding, or, or, you know, maybe somebody else. You know, if, if they're trying to respond and they're not at their desk or at their computer, and, and they just hit reply, and then, you know, a few chains down, that's when the reply, or that's when other folks are, are copied in. And it's not, and it's not, you know, something that's happening all the time. But, and I'm, and I'm not trying to talk about kind of, or dwell on what's been going on. I'm just, my point is moving forward, that's one thing that would be helpful to me. So that if we do send an email, my request would be, and I, my preference would be, is that we all just copy each other.
Yeah. And actually, I, I took the time to ask Matt about that because it was a change. And I did send him an email that the board wasn't copied on. He said, remember we changed this? I said, yep, I got to get into the new habit of doing that. But what Matt would like to see is exactly what you said. We copy everyone, but also always copy Lynn as well. So because he's her, or she's his reminder to make sure of the little things that may be being asked. I don't know if people do that or not. I mean, I haven't seen any reply alls that people have asked for stuff like that. You know, I did ask Matt about emails and whether a lot of board members are asking for the, asking the cabinet and him to do stuff or do extra work. And he said, really? Not really. And I believe that because I can tell you for a fact that any emails where I've asked for something specific, i.e. data or a question to Jamie, they've always replied all. So I'm not really certain what types or how much emails going to the district office. But it may be coming from my account, but I'm not sending it.
And I'm not singling you out because there are others that do the same thing.
Okay.
And I, I just didn't want to.
Have been others that.
Yeah, if, ever since we did have that conversation, other than the first email, though, I think it's been very clear, the emails dealing with some of the stuff, even in preparation for the meeting tonight, or the committees, or the retreat, or whatever, everyone's been copied on those from the beginning, which is exactly what he has asked us to do.
I completely agree with that.
I just, I just want to back up a step because I think, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Jeff, but the way you started this was, let's talk about this, let's have an open discussion among the group. Let's not try to point to, you know, things that have happened in the past, and who did what, and, you know, make this personal. I know that when I was a new board member, it was hard for me to know what should I email versus what should be brought up in the meeting. And that's when I think Jeff added the Board Roundtable when he was president, which I think has done a great deal to, you know, give us a forum to ask questions and be educated on things and ask for information that we might want to have. Because I, I think our guiding principle ought to be that the public deserves to know what we're doing. And when we do it via email, even though it is foilable, I doubt that, you know, members of the public are going to bother to take the time to foil, you know, all of our emails. So whether it's educating ourselves, or asking follow-up questions, or things like that, I think the public deserves to hear that. And I think that needs to be our guiding principle, that most of our discussion should occur right here. And we have a Board Roundtable specifically for that purpose. And I know it was difficult when I was new to kind of, you know, figure all that out.
So how do you propose then, we get background reading for a lot of the items on the agenda from the district. So it's, how do you propose if we know we want to discuss something on Roundtable, or we hear or see something that wants to be discussed in a future meeting, that we get the background information, whether it's some article that's relevant to what we're talking about, or as I've done, which I've pointed out a number of times, say, not to go back there, but policies or, or laws or stuff, so we understand and have a discussion as to why we want to proceed the way we do. How do you want, or how do you prefer, your opinion, you want us to handle that? So we have all the information prior to, instead of talking about it and not really being able to make a decision then and having to wait two or three weeks out.
That's a great question. I, I haven't noticed that that's most of the email. I haven't noticed that most of the email is asking for an article, or a legal opinion, or things like that. What I have noticed is that we have full-blown conversations over email. And then we get to the board meeting, and we just vote on stuff. So the public is never able to hear the interchange back and forth. Certainly, I've, I've seen some of my colleague board members, when they, when they want more information on something, like if they saw the transportation presentation by Dana, and they wanted to know, like, what are the other school districts, or something like that, they'll shoot a quick email and just say, hey Dana, or hey Matt, I'd love to know who these school districts are, if we can have that information. And then it's, then it's discussed in the board meeting. You know, somebody will say, like, a board member, you know, wrote to me and wanted to know this, that, and the other thing. And here's the information. So.
Okay. Because I'm just trying to think about, because I haven't seen any emails that I was concerned about, that haven't been discussed in open sessions. So I guess I'm just kind of trying to figure out where this came from. I don't know, Jeff, did you find the examples that you wanted to?
Yeah. I found one example, and I'll, you have to give me a little while because they're long and lengthy. But I will start reading from the beginning of the chain.
Why don't you just start with a topic first?
I'll just start reading. It's, it's about, let's see, topic is schedules. And this one went on for a while. So on June, Saturday, June 15th, Jen wrote a lengthy email to Matt, Matt only. I was contacted by Rebecca McLean about it late yesterday afternoon. I contacted you right away. I got concerned because I was told it was being discussed between parents at the cross-country meeting Thursday night. I missed the meeting, so I have no idea what was present or what parents she was talking to. I'm not sure I would know who they are anyway. That team is huge. I was contacted again by her last night, and I relayed to you all of the different things she started right away. I am not sure if these are just your thoughts, or a compilation of the thoughts from parents she supposedly was hearing from in response to emails that are allegedly to be out there. It sounds like parents are asking each other a lot of questions and are upset. Supposedly, some students went to teachers for help, and the teachers have said their hands are tied. It was conveyed to me that parents who knew are livid about the loss of a class and the lack of. It was conveyed to me that parents who knew are livid about the loss of a class and the lack of communications, those who have just, just found out about it yesterday, question mark, are in disbelief that this is happening. She claims schedules had been done during the winter and now all students are being asked to drop an elective. And it is not just foreign language and orchestra students with a conflict. Matt, I have no idea how much of this is true, if it is true, or parts are true. And the extent has been blown out of proportion. I have not seen any electronic communications, but I would no doubt that they're out there. I am sure you will find out. I just heard about it when I sent you the text yesterday after work. So I have no idea if any other board members have been contacted. Kim would be a good one to ask since her daughter is in 10th grade. Jeff and Matt have kids at Baker or are about to go to Baker. Do they know about schedule changes for their friends since they were made? Maybe you can reach out to them to see if anyone has contacted them or if their kids had to drop anything. I hope this is helpful information to you. Reply from Matt, Saturday, June fifteenth, 12:04 a.m., which is typically when Matt is checking emails. Thank you, Jen. I received one email tonight from a parent. I'm working with the administration to find out what's going on. Are you the only board member people are talking to, or are there others just not telling me? Who exactly is giving you this information? It will have, it will make my job easier if I have all the information so we know who to contact to help us put this fire out. And if we did something wrong, we will get it straight from the individual and make the correction. Time is not on our side with this. And I actually read Joan, Jen's reply because her original email was June fourteenth at 11:30 p.m. the day before. Jen wrote, I can't believe I am being contacted now about this. Supposedly there is a lot of stuff out here, apparently a lot of emails flying around, or at least I am told this. I don't have kids affected, so I wouldn't receive any. I asked about social media and was told not yet, but that they may put it out there themselves. Her parents are livid. Apparently this was going on for two weeks and now is being questioned as more kids are sharing info with parents. No communication has come from the school, which has angered parents. This is what I have heard so far, so you know what was coming. One. And just so you know, this list goes to eight. Apparently a period was going to be cut years ago, which parents fought. And the rumor is the district may be trying to do this again quietly. I imagine this was before my time here and I did not know because my kids were really little, question mark. All students scheduled for foreign language. Four, who are in orchestra need to choose between two. No chance for sealed by literacy and two years of no foreign language, which is bad if required to take a language in college. Three, this is impacting the cohort that got messed up with the previous superintendent's decision for math and science. Not another, now another subject. I can only imagine the raging of some right now, this cohort has gotten hit so many times. Four, rumor that all Baker students are getting one less class next year. Five, Latin is an issue and parents have no idea their kid's foreign language experience is done next week. I know getting a teacher is a struggle and parents should have received communication about this program ending or most likely ending, not sure what the district decided. Six, belief that ban gets preference over orchestras, ban students do not have to choose. Seven, parents and students frustrated, angry, and hopeless because the decision has been made. No communication and belief the district did not do a goof, I'm assuming good job, of finding an alternative. Seriously, don't know what is going on, but I doubt these people know either. So I am not sure how they can say a good job was not done. I certainly can't opine on this, I know nothing and just heard about it yesterday. Eight, upset with foreign language as being considered an elective. Why not math and science if they only need three years of these subjects? You know how I feel about a gap year or two, especially with math. Well, not sure what was communicated to who and when, or even if. Seems like these are some, there is some unrest out there right now and could be, have kept at bay that there, that there have been better communication, especially with a parent. I am sorry, want to give you the details of what I heard so that you have your staff can be prepared. Now those were all to Matt. So we finally got included by Matt, um, June seventeenth, it appears. Uh, Jen, correction, we have not heard from any parents. I received an email from a student who I advised to speak to her counselor. So, um, from there then, uh, Jen replied, thank you for the correction. Uh, you asked me to read some examples, I'm reading them.
Oh, no, keep, keep going, thank you.
I have no idea what is going on. Did you want, did not want it to get out of control. Then Joe DeBarbury on June seventeenth, which I believe is a Sunday, emailed the, and included the whole board. With all due respect, this is getting out of control. I spent a significant amount of time this Father's Day weekend with Matt, following all the emails received from the board, which I believe is just one board member, and looking at the high school master schedule, trying to understand the concern. After extensive review, conversations with Don Root and others, the student conflicts are no different than any other school year. The district offers forty-two singleton courses, which always requires students to make choices. It is impossible to schedule forty-two singletons, so they do not conflict with each other. That would require a forty-two period school day, one course each period. Students are getting into core classes, core courses are required courses for graduation or to meet program requirements, which include math, science, English, social studies, P.E., health, Lot, and music. According to the high school administrators, next year each period gains instruction time in minutes, so the students will be benefiting in all the classes they take. The increased time is due to the reduction ten minutes in lunchtime from forty minutes to thirty minutes. Jen's reply on the seventeenth. Joe, there is no one who feels worse than me. I agree that this is out of control. I have always given a heads up when I hear something. I have got, given a heads up when I hear, I got very nervous this time because of the types of things being stated about the district trying to sneak one by the public. I have no idea what the history is with kids getting less classes. What I do know is that I am very protective of the work you all do. Unfortunately, the loyalty I have to the team with communication has not timed well this time. I told Rebecca I never heard anything about this and Matt is transparent. He would have let us know in case the issue has brought to us. Hours later, I was then inundated with all the things in my email. I passed them along so that you all were contacted, you would know what to expect. I understand exactly what you are saying about choices students have to make. This has always been the case. I have no idea why there were, seems to be issues. There is nothing I can do about this now, other than I say, I'm sorry it happened, which I can't control what one individual does. But I certainly rethink going forward, how and when I should be communicated to you. I admit I have a lot of pride in this, just sure it can get defensive when I hear accusations like this. I should know better because nobody can make everybody happy. Jen, I believe that's the end of the chain. And the reason I bring that up was when I raised the question to Matt, we should talk about email communications. I consider those extensive and part of what was in there should have been discussed at a meeting. We never had any discussion. We did have Ms. McLean come in and a few others talk about their dismay over the scheduling. And I believe we found, we got some more data from Matt, um, as a board, that then showed that, um, as, as Joe said in there, that the issues and concerns that were there were not really, I don't remember his words and I don't want to put words in Joe's mouth, but were not as extensive as what was being reported through Jen from others. So that was the email chain that prompted me to say, this is too much. We're even telling, Matt is, or Joe is even saying he had to spend his Father's Day weekend going over things that one board member sends a concern. And the board here can't do anything about it because we don't know about it. So I said, why don't we have an open discussion about what we're sending? So we're not sending people off on goose chases like that and having to spend their weekend on something that the board may consider not even a topic we should be digging that far into, other than letting them know. So if the board feels that I maybe misunderstood those, I'm fine with that. But those were extensive emails that the board hasn't even copied on in the first few rounds of it. So we didn't even know what was going on. So there's your example, Jen, um, I provided one and I.
And I appreciate it. And according to, um, how we decided as a board to communicate, I did exactly what we were supposed to be doing. And I did not deviate from what was decided. Now, what you don't know is a phone conversation prior to that, letting him know. And then more stuff came out. And yes, I thought it was imperative that he did know what was being said because it could have been an incredible scheduling issue, especially when he was telling me about the renovations in the cafeteria and how they had to add an additional lunch. And ooh, maybe we should look into this because it could affect a lot of students. That wasn't an email and why time was of the essence, which is what he referred to. But you weren't privy to that phone conversation. Now, we are allowed, if you look.
As was not the board privy to any of this information that you're bringing up. So that's part of this discussion. What do we want to do as a board versus do directly with the superintendent?
If you looked at Matt's contract and looked at the section five for referral process.
I've looked at it many times, thank you.
Okay, what does it say about?
You're gonna tell me.
Yes, I am. The board individually and collectively shall discreetly refer to the superintendent for his study and recommendation, criticisms, complaints, suggestions, communications, or comments regarding the administration of the district or the superintendent's performance of his duties. I never believed in embarrassing anyone publicly. I stated that a long time ago when I got on the board because I saw some things happening where I felt that was hap, going to happen and to put people at ease. That that, that they would never be treated that way.
And I don't think anybody's accusing you of trying to embarrass or not embarrass somebody. I think the intent is, how much are we gonna carry conversations over email and phone calls and texts before the board is involved in it? That's what I'm trying to get to. Your intent, I'm not saying your intent was nefarious or bad or wrong. I think you had the best.
Were you copied in, Jeff?
I think you had the best intentions to do this. I'm just asking, is four-page emails over and over again the way to do it? That's what I want to hear from the board. Do we feel that this is?
I was asked what the issues were.
I don't want to sit here and have a conver, a debate with you. I want to hear from the board of what they think. This is not you against me, this is the board. What do we want to do?
I was asked by our superintendent what the complaints were. I'm sorry, I was given a lengthy list. I could have left them off, I suppose, but I think it was fair to the administration to know, based on past history, what could potentially come. And it was identified by the superintendent that, hmm, there is a change in scheduling up there with additional lunch, shortened periods. Now, we obviously found out what the issue was. People were automatically scheduled to lunch when they used to have the option of not. But understand, the school year is just about over. If there was an error, it would have been a nightmare contacting all of those students. And time was of the essence, as our superintendent said.
So can I just, um, interject here related to what I was saying before? I think in this particular email, this was not a request for information. It wasn't a request for edification on any policy or law or anything like that. It was a situation where, um, a community member approaches a board member and, with some information or a complaint. And that's gonna happen too. I'll tell you, the first time I, I think I was on the board for maybe a week and I got a call from, um, a community member. Um, and so it is, it's a, it makes you a little nervous because you're not sure exactly, you know, what you're supposed to do and how to handle that. And you're certainly elected by the public, so you want to be responsive and, and do the right thing. But I think we've, um, talked about, um, that we should communicate to the public about going through the chain of command. So in this particular situation, there is a chain of command to voice concerns about, you know, if your student didn't get into classes they wanted, there is a chain of command they can follow. Um, I think, um, also, uh, we talked about, um, communicating to Matt just to give him a, a heads up about these things. And it doesn't have to be a real detailed email because getting into our opinions about schedules and, um, you know, whether students are getting the classes that they need and things like that, that's not really at, at a board level to talk about. It's not at a policy level, we're not risking litigation for any of these things. It's something that we delegate to the administrators of the school district to handle. They, they make the schedule, they propose the courses that are going to be offered, they make sure there are teachers to teach them, et cetera. So I think, you know, in situations like this, certainly we can ask as a board, um, you know, about the array of classes that are being offered. Are there any students that get closed out of things, that kind of thing? But we don't need to get into the details of, you know, a particular student's schedule and whether that particular student got what they want. That is best handled by the parent, the student, and the administration.
And I, I do agree with you with all of your statements. And unfortunately, part, this conversation started as per phone call, giving him the heads up, which we've always given the cabinet and our superintendent the courtesy of. So you weren't privy to all of the information and the concerns that were shared that eventually came out and they were going to come out. But time was of the essence because we also had a board meeting, a day that could have gone by where if something was an error, it could be fixed. And a board member where, or a board meeting where I was concerned about the potential of what was going to happen. People did come and speak, there were two. Um, but giving the heads up, I think is always appropriate and imperative. So the worst thing I want is to see our superintendent or cabinet blindsided by anyone from the public. Because I would sit here feeling terrible, knowing that I had knowledge that possibly something was stirring. And that's what I was led to believe. And with then talking to Matt and hearing about the changes at the high school, which was not an email, he said, yeah, we should look into this. And then I got Raj with all the complaints and then he asked what they were and I said, here they are. So I was really following, is working with the superintendent to make sure he has the information. And I did what I was asked. I mean, I know that we technically, he always says that we are his boss. But it's a mutual respect. He asked and I gave him the answers that he was looking for.
Sorry, um, okay. So I, I just want to go back to what you were saying, Kristi, because I, I just need further understanding. So are you saying that if a community member approaches us with a complaint or a concern, that we do give Matt the courtesy of letting him know?
Yeah, we, we generally do give Matt the courtesy of letting him know, but also communicate to the, to the community member, you know, that, that there is a chain of command and that you would really encourage them to follow, uh, that chain of command.
Okay, so I just want to go back, so, because I feel like we're kind of all running in circles here. So going back to what Jeff just read. So another board member did that, correct? They, they let Matt know that there was a concern. So, so what is the issue right now? Is the issue that it's a lengthy email? Or is the issue that people weren't, I, I guess that's what I'm, like, what, I'm confused by this. Because if, if.
So my concern when this came up and it was shared by Joe in his email, that sharing the concern and then handing it off to them to take care of, but then it's the, it's the constant back and forth with long, continue to create the conversations. And then, which inevitably, as Joe said, created work for him, Root, Matt. And then Matt shared with us last meeting, or the meeting that this came up when we had the people speak, that no real issues were found in this. You know, it was great information, they were able to get to it. Did it need to be done over the weekend and spend our administrators' weekend doing it? Don't know. If it's that critical that the board needs to discuss this, we can call a emergency meeting anytime. And it sounds like the thought was that this was so critical, it had to be handled at a very imperative time. And the board should then be included, if the board needs to handle. I disagree that the board needed to have an emergency meeting on this because I don't think it raised to that level. But it certainly caused our administrators a significant amount of work over the weekend to figure what the complaints were. And there was a significant back and forth that I think, there's a difference between raising the issue and handing it off to the administration to handle than continuing to churn on it. As, as I read, again, my interpretation, if the board feels differently about it, I'd love to hear from the board. But this is where the concern came up. Joe, at the same time, shared his concern that, you know, this was getting out of control and it was reiterated by Matt. So, you know, when they're feeling it's out of control and they're spending their weekends doing things that, and I think they have an oblig, or they feel an obligation to do things when the board asks them to. And they don't typically say, which board member? They just say, the board asked me to do this, so we did it. Because as Jen mentioned, Matt refers to us as his bosses. So, you know, it causes that churn. And I think this one in particular caused a lot of churn that in the end wasn't as a problem that was being made out by a community member to be. So, but we need to hand that off and then we're done. And we've seen this before in the past of, you know, board members spending too much time on certain issues. And this is where to, what Kristi was saying, you know, like if a parent comes up and complains to me about a teacher, first thing I say is, did you talk to that teacher? Now, if they say yes, I say, well, then your next stop's the principal. You know, thank you for sharing your concern, but that's not, to me, a board member's now, depends on what the issue is. Maybe I'll give Matt a heads up if it's a real issue. If it's, hey, they don't like their teacher because she's mean. That's something they need to handle internally, talk to the teacher and stuff like that. So, but then we're done, you know, we hand that off. And I don't create, you know, too much about it if a parent asks me about a teacher or their principal. So that, I don't know if I answered your question, but.
Denise, I really appreciate you asking that because I think there are two issues right now. Um, for you, especially being new, is the communication and how that, um, is supposed to happen. We do get, as Kristi said, we do give them the courtesy when someone from the community, um, says what was shared with me and understanding, being a former teacher, the type. And understanding, being a former teacher, the type of situation that could involve and the type of work involved, I did call to give Matt the heads-up, as it says in our contract with him, between the board and him, as to how we handle this. So I know I definitely followed that correctly. That's- that's the first piece of that. Jeff, are you upset about the content of the email, the length of the email, when the board was copied in? Because there's three different issues there.
I simply raised the question to the board to see what their opinions were on this. If it says, "Me only," I've shared my opinions on what I felt. I felt it was too lengthy. It ended up spinning up our administrators over the weekend for something that potentially wasn't something they needed, either needed to look at over the weekend and could've waited. Matt, that's for Matt to decide, not us.
And he did decide, based on the information that I shared with him via the phone.
Based on them spending all weekend on it, and then finding out there wasn't any real issues, then yes, they were able to figure that out. I'm asking, is that the board's job to do that? That's all I'm asking. This is not a personal thing between you and me.
No, it's not.
This is something I would like to hear from the board. If- if I'm the only one over here thinking this, I'm fine with it. I'll keep my mouth shut.
Jeff, I asked three questions.
And I gave you the answers to them, Jen.
Were you upset-
You don't want to listen to them, don't ask them.
Were you upset about the content, the length, or when you were copied in? Because there were three separate issues. Were you upset about the content in there?
All three. All three. There, I answered your question.
So the content, I was asked-
The content was more in-depth than what we need to be doing over- over email. We were copied in after about four rounds of this.
Now, did-
The length was extremely long for something that should be shared with our public, that could've waited. If it was that big of an emergency that it couldn't, we should've been out here in an emergency meeting so that you could share all your opinions. I don't want to argue over this single point. This is about communication, not about these specific emails, Jen. I don't get where you're going with this.
You read the email, so I'm not sure what-
I did read the email, because you requested that I read the email. So I read it in its entirety, so people could listen to it.
So you only have an issue with one email, then? Okay.
I've got all night. I can read every email we want, if that's what the board wants to do. I don't think that's the point of this.
I'm asking, the content, was there an issue with the content? Because I was asked specifically by our superintendent what the issues were and the complaints out there. So was I out of line by typing every single bit of information that was relayed to me to give him a heads-up? So that's my first question.
Can I just make a suggestion? You had talked about the need for team review. Matt isn't here to talk about, you know, what he wanted to hear. So, if I could make a suggestion, maybe we should continue this conversation when Matt is here, and if team review is the appropriate place to do it, we'll- we'll do it there. Because I think we're not- we're not making any progress here.
Well, we're not. And Matt needs to really be here for this discussion as well, and- and maybe Joe too. But I think we need to just table this discussion until they're available and we all have it there. And then Matt can recommunicate what his expectations are. Because right now, we're trying to guess, and I think it has to come from Matt.
I took the time to ask him what it was.
But I think that's part of the problem, is that-
Which he said he already told us.
But- but when you take the time to ask Matt, it does end up excluding the board from the conversation. And that- and that's part of the thing that- that I think can be frustrating to people, is that there's a lot of sidebar conversations that go on that- that we don't necessarily understand. And so, with all due respect, you saying, "I talked to Matt and I know what his answer is," I don't think is helpful to anybody.
I should've rephrased that. I verified what he told us in the review was how he wanted to proceed, because he wouldn't be here for this tonight.
I still think Matt needs to be here to speak for himself.
Yeah, I do too. And I think we'll just table the discussion on this topic.
And I think we need to table this discussion.
Tell Matt can be there.
Yeah, and I agree. Actually, I was surprised that it was staying on, because it was clearly had to do with him. And that's why I asked him. We were having this conversation, and you're not even here. And he said, "Well, I don't need to be here, because I already told the board at the review how I wanted it to be." So-
Well, let's move on to the next one, the summer board retreat. I think that's probably another topic that should be here when Matt is here. I don't know how it feels, so we can move on from that. Board goals. I'm not sure if that's a topic. I think we're gonna be doing board goals. I think we need to- look, I don't- you- do you have copies of our- this past year's board goals? Because I think that would- if we were gonna have a discussion on board goals, they should have a copy of what we had last year, and then everybody would think about it.
I actually asked Matt what he meant by board goals, so I knew, because I was filling Brian and Denise in on what to expect at the first meeting. And he said that was just for us to discuss as to when we wanted to get together to work on board goals.
I believe it was done there for August 12th, for team review, for board goals. Yeah, that's- I remember seeing that.
I wasn't at Agenda Planning, so I don't know what the conversation was to have that on Roundtable. And that's why I asked him.
Well, that's what I have on my calendar, anyway. But be- if you have copies of those goals, be thinking about maybe what- what our goals will be for the following year. Some of it will probably be continued. And then we can move on from there.
So I have a question about board goals and the information in the Friday letter that Joe will be talking about at the August 26 meeting, going over the regions review. Does anyone have a problem with me emailing Joe and asking a little bit more of a breakdown on the data? Because there's key benchmarks that we have in our board goals that you really can't see, if we've met those benchmarks, based on the 5% increments that were chosen for that table.
I believe what we agreed to was, we would send all those requests through Matt, and Matt would forward those on to the administrator that would do the work. So I think that request should go to Matt, and Matt can forward that to Joe if that's who he would like to do the work.
But I have no problem with you doing that. I think the- looking at it in the 5% increments is difficult. So, you know, whether we want to maintain that to do the 5% increments, but also to consolidate those a little bit differently, I think would also be helpful. I think that's what you're referring to.
The 5% increments is something I asked for, like one of the first emails I sent out for my very first meeting as a board member, because we weren't getting- we were just basically getting the number of students who met Mastery and the numbers of students who passed. And there's a big story between even 5% increments as to the knowledge the student actually has. So we've definitely improved with that, having the extended data table that Joe created. The first year, the 5% increment was a little bit different. The second year, he shifted it over a number, and the problem is with our board goals, and we're looking at increments such as aspirational data, that's a 75 for English, and aspirational data for math is an 80. The problem is, that's in an increment where you- you can't tell where that cutoff is. And the same thing, there is another one. Oh, was it the passing? It's definitely the aspir- we need to pull out the 80- oh, the 85s for Mastery. You can't tell how many students actually made Mastery or not.
We can- we can also talk about that August 12th, when we have that next team review.
I could just send out an email, just like Jeff said, just as the way Matt would like it to him, and then he can get it to Joe. And, you know, that's- and then we just remember, because he understands that it's a change in the way we're communicating with each other, and that some people may forget to put everyone on there. And he would just end up copying everyone right away, anyway. So everyone will get the information that's being asked for.
Okay. So I think, is that it for Roundtable? Okay.
Joan, I have a question.
Yes.
On agenda planning meetings, could we talk about that for a minute?
Yes.
So, I had sent an email to the whole board, and CC'd Matt and Lynn. So at Board Orientation, we were told that two board members attend the agenda planning meetings, and that Lynn would just assign dates.
Well, you asked for a specific date, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So I just wanted to bring that up here to see if- is the goal to- if the goal is to have two board members there, would everybody- is it two or one?
It's the president, vice president, and a- and a-
Okay, and one. I apologize. Okay. So, could we possibly discuss, you know, if there's- if there's meeting dates that work better for us?
I don't- I don't see it as a problem.
The way it's worked in the past is, we've been assigned-
Right.
But then you can trade at any point, if you're gonna be out of town for work, or whatever. We just, hey, can you cover this month? I'll do next week.
You just should let- make sure that they know.
Okay.
I think- oh, I thought I was having Dave's issue. I think part of the issue was, there was an email that said, "We didn't want board members to be involved in-" specific board members, or particular board members to be involved in too many meetings.
Yes.
That if you kind of did all of these switches.
Yep.
So I think when I did the math, I mean, if everybody's targeting three to four meetings, agenda plannings, or something like that, because it's 18 meetings, nine people, but the board, whatever, it's like seven people that goes through. I think if we just do that, I don't think it's that big of a deal if somebody says, "Hey, I really can't make it." And just be a little bit more flexible with it versus, you know, that issue. So if there's something that you know you can't make now, absolutely, I think that-
Yeah. I don't think anybody had a problem with the dates that you requested. If anybody else had any, for the most part, I think everybody's usually okay with the rotation. It's just if you turn- if it turns out that all of a sudden it's your turn and you can't make it, you- it's really hard to substitute last minute.
But we are allowed to substitute, Joan?
Um, I think it was a case, if you can't make it, then you just- you kind of lose your turn, I guess.
Okay. I think it's pretty important that we have someone on the board who's present, not just president and vice president, and that we should be, I mean, we should be allowed to trade. And, I mean, we're all grown-ups, I mean, we can decide, as long as everyone's having an equal number of times. I don't think it really matters during the calendar year as to when they-
That's the main thing, is they have the equal number of times. Because I know, two or three years ago, it was, all of a sudden, it was like uneven. When- and that's where the concern was, because it needs to be evenly spread around.
I- I don't mind if, you know, Denise is a teacher, so if you need to- if you know that there are certain dates when, you know, you're gonna have off, or something like that. I mean, I don't- I don't mind working around that, because usually I can do whatever if you tell me in enough, you know, in- in advance.
We're also flexible in the time. Like, when I was board president, we actually bumped it back to seven o'clock start, so that we could get out of there and get to work. So, you know, Matt said he would, at the time, he would be able to support whatever. So, you know, if whoever's board president going forward says, "Can we move it to seven?" Or if the board decides we want to have them at seven, they were very easy to accommodate that. Right, Jamie?
Just as FYI, though, 7:30 really is hard.
I'm not offering that as a suggestion. I'm just saying we've done it in the past.
Because people drop their kids off, and it's really hard to get in here at 7:30.
My day starts at 7:15, so I don't know if I should do that. But, yeah, it's six a.m.
Yeah, so in theory, you won't make- be able to make many of them, right? Because of the school year.
Well, I mean, I can be flexible, but as a teacher, I just need to make sure I'm planning that out.
Yeah.
So-
And in the past, too, if somebody couldn't make it, the next person up would slide in, and then-
Okay.
Yeah. It can work. It can work itself out, you know, as long as you- and it's nice that you had some days out of time. Makes it even easier.
So do you want me to just wait until that- until Lynn kind of assigns us? Or do you want me to email Lynn and say, "Hey, could you put me here?"
Well, that information will probably be given to Lynn. If she doesn't have it now, it will be given to her. Because we- I remember, we talked about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But usually, like, if something comes up, or somebody's gonna be out of town, or something, then just contact the board president, and then they can figure it out. I think that's something the board president could handle, since they're the ones that run agenda planning meeting.
If that happens, I recommend that, just so communication goes out to the entire board. I'm not available to- and this is if everyone agrees to this format. I cannot make it to such-and-such board meeting, agenda planning. Is there anyone who is willing to switch with me? And then everyone knows. And then everyone can look at their calendar. I mean, if we're gonna- I think we should be consistent with everything, including communications like that, so everyone knows what's going on.
I think it would also be helpful, this kind of related topic, but if the person who's assigned that week, because we're already assigned for the next 12 months, if we get like a heads-up email on like Monday that, "Hey, you're up for agenda planning in two days," just because it's where that list is stored, and how do you memorize? I mean, yes, we could keep track of it, but it would be nice to get a heads-up of who's up next for the Wednesday thing. It's something to think about.
Once in a while, people-
Yeah, just a reminder that, hey, you're- because you only do it every couple of months, anyway, so it's not generally on-
It's actually on the calendar in the Friday Letter, who's up for agenda planning.
Okay. As long as it's somewhere. I didn't see it in the Friday Letter, but-
Anything else?
I'm sorry, it's not like in the, like, the- each specific section, it's actually on the events calendar, who's supposed to be where and when.
Maybe it can be brought more out to the front than just the one at the line.
No, it does help, because I know two or three in the past have forgotten, or like, oh, I-
I'm guilty.
Okay.
I've been being quiet. Now we go to the issue we had of the- to break the tie for the vote for president. So we have two people who have been nominated and seconded, and we're at a 4-4 tie. So what I would like to do is do a roll-call vote. I'm gonna ask everybody to roll-call vote for Joan first, because she was nominated first, and then Jen. So I'm gonna start at this end of the table and go all the way around. Is that acceptable? Okay, we're only gonna vote for Joan right now.
This is a yes or a no?
This is a yes. You want Joan to be president, yes or no? Or, you can- you can- yeah, that's correct. So do you want Joan to be president, yes or no, Jen?
No.
Kim?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kristi?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Denise? Matt?
Yes.
Brian?
No.
So it's five yeses to four no's for Joan. So Joan is the president. So now what I'd like to do is, I'd like to accept nominations for the position of vice president. I'd like to nominate Kristi. Is there a second?
Second.
Anybody else?
I'll nominate Jen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna do the same thing again.
Allow the president candidates to just say something briefly. I think we should do the same courtesy to these candidates.
Okay, Kristi, you wanna start?
So, I'm willing to serve in whatever the board feels would be helpful and useful. I was board vice president under Jeff, so had a year of experience in that role. And I, you know, I liked what we did, adding the board roundtable, trying to increase open communication, try to create a respectful atmosphere and dialogue. And so, you know, if it's the board's pleasure that I serve in this role, I would certainly be, you know, honored to do it. But I respect whatever the pleasure of the board is, and would certainly work with whoever ended up being vice president.
For all of the reasons stated previously, obviously hold true for vice president as well. I do think that the issues that have been brought forward are issues that keep coming forward. forward and if we continue having the same people in leadership, we're not going to get much change. And part of that is going through the entire process. And as stated in role of president, I would do the same thing as vice president because you are involved in more meetings. I would like to see a sheet made up throughout the whole year of timing, making sure things are done at the right time, done in the right order, a lot of things I've brought forward since I've been on the board, so we can improve our functioning as a board. And at year end, have a review as maybe part of our team review of, "Okay, how do we do this? Is this something we want to do?" And we get feedback and fine tune things because we haven't really been doing things exactly the way we should. Not saying that we're doing anything wrong, but I think that as my statement has always been regardless of any topic, good or bad, we should always be striving to get better. Change is one thing, but we need to have progress with that change and I would like to be part of that progress and change combined.
Okay, since Jim nominated Kristy first, I'm going to do the same thing again, go from left to right. So this is a yes or no for Kristy to be the vice president. Jen?
No.
Kim?
No.
Jeff?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kristy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Denise?
No.
Matt?
Yes.
Brian?
No.
So it's five yeses for Kristy. So Kristy is now the vice president. So if you give me a second, I'm going to get the oath so that both folks can take their oaths of office. Joan, if you'd please read your oath of office.
I just solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of President, Board of Education, according to the best of my ability.
Kristy, if you do the oath for the vice president, please.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Vice President, Board of Education, according to the best of my ability.
Resolved that the Board of Education enter into executive session to discuss the employment of a particular individual, collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, the Taylor Law, and three, potential litigation. Do I have a motion?
No.
Who said move? Matt and Kim? All in favor?
Aye.
Post carried 9-0.